Work session. This is Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, and this is our work session. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Esterbrook will be coming. He's just going to be here a little late this evening. Our first agenda item tonight is the CVB third quarter report. And Karen Hibbert will be presenting this evening. Hit it again, Karen. Oh, not Karen Hibbert. Sorry.
My name is Bernie Haney. I'm the head commissioner and business bureau steering committee chair.
And it certainly has been a challenging year for the hospitality industry. The hoteliers, restaurant properties, entertainment venues. More notably, the conventions and conferences taking place this year have not been quite to our expectations, unfortunately. Decreased transient guest tax dollars and lower city sales tax revenues, which you're having to deal with tonight. However, there is some hope and optimism moving into two thousand and twenty-one for the hospitality industry. City Commission's approval of the outdoor dining platforms that has been well received by our restaurant owners. Expansion of the Manhattan Conference Center. Completion of the three recreation centers next year that could attract youth tournaments and other events. The Chamber of Commerce identifying ways to financially support our small local businesses to assure they will survive during these challenging times. And Kansas State University's continued efforts for improved enrollment numbers. And on a personal plug, the opening of the new Colbert Hills Stay and Play Lodges next year to attract destination golfers to enjoy the number one public golf course in Kansas, right here in Manhattan. We are very thankful of the leadership provided by Jason Smith, president and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, and your next presenter, who is dedicated and committed to bringing visitors to Manhattan, Karen Hibbert, director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thanks.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thanks, Bernie, for those great encouraging words because I do think it is easy for us to become discouraged. It certainly, I have to tell you, that many times we take things for granted and when they can't happen, then we become... It's not very much fun. It's hard to believe that this is our third quarter presentation and I'm finally getting to stand before you in person and be able to share with you what our third quarter has looked like. Well, thank goodness for our STAR report. However, for twenty-eight weeks in a row, our hotel occupancy has continued to be downward. Our goal is to move those arrows so that they're moving upward. We are indeed grateful for the small increases that we are seeing in our occupancy. On average, our week-to-week occupancy is down about twenty-four percent from last year. During the third quarter, our lowest day of occupancy was Monday, September the seventh, which was Labor Day, with a twenty-point-nine percent occupancy. Our lowest week of the third quarter was June twenty-eighth through the July fourth with thirty-four-point-seven percent occupancy. I do have to remind you that that isn't an increase from what we were seeing in our second quarter, however. Our month-to-month STAR report, as well as our year-to-date STAR report, reflected activity only through the month of August. I will receive on Thursday how well we've performed for September. Our month-to-month August occupancy shows that our occupancy was running about forty-eight-point-six percent compared to August of two thousand and nineteen. That's a decline of seventeen-point-five percent. Our year-to-date through August, our occupancy is at forty-one-point-six percent. This, again, is a twenty-two-point-four percent decrease from where we were in two thousand and nineteen year-to-date. We do have good news, and we're really excited to share with you. Our largest meeting space expansion is completed. This video shows you the safety measures that are in place, ensuring our visitors that their meeting venue is safe and socially distanced. We're in process of creating a video that will be a virtual open house. Currently, the air walls just came in this week for the conference center. We're in process of creating a virtual open house that will go to all of our meeting planners, encouraging them to envision themselves meeting in Manhattan. Our third-quarter meetings have indeed changed since COVID. This chart reflects the meetings that the CVB works directly with. Traditionally, the third quarter is a very active quarter with multiple meetings held, especially in the month of September. Unfortunately, this is not the case in our third quarter two thousand and twenty. This chart reflects meetings the CVB again works directly with. More meetings choose Manhattan that book directly with our hotels. When you compare business impacted by COVID, this is very, very dramatic. No meetings were held in the second quarter, with only one meeting that we've worked directly with being held in the third quarter. As Bernie said, the entire hospitality community looks forward to much brighter days. Meetings are indeed still happening. Now they're just held virtually. We have created some virtual backgrounds for our planners to distribute and use if their meeting was slated for Manhattan, but then has been forced to be virtual. Our meeting in Manhattan backgrounds have been well received by our planners. Although I know you will agree with me, it's much better when they're here in person. I'm going to run through some digital campaign numbers so that you can see for yourself that we are doing our utmost best to keep Manhattan top of mind. Our reach local impressions of one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen is a combination of eight hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven Facebook and YouTube impressions of three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two, which generates over four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight link clicks. This campaign is gaining us brand awareness in visitor markets such as Oklahoma City, Wichita, and Columbia, Missouri. Our campaign is doing exactly what we want, and that is to driving traffic to our website. In-house, we have completed several paid campaigns ourselves, one primarily about our Oh Manhattan Bingo, and others on Twitter and Pinterest. We gained a great amount of impressions of brand reach with these ads. Our organic social media remains consistent with a small downward fluctuation due mostly to Facebook platform changes. With the upcoming elections, we know many users have opted out of using Facebook during these times. Also note again that the KSU campaign and our Fly MHK campaigns both have been halted. Our impressions continue to go up with our Reach Local campaign, and our primary goal with our current target area is for consumers to gain an awareness of Manhattan as a travel destination. Our organic social media has had a small fluctuation downward, which is due mostly to Facebook numbers also going downward. And again, I stated that the KSU campaign, which ran last October through this March, we are not doing that for this year and into twenty-one. And obviously, the Fly MHK campaign, we also have halted that. During third quarter, we miss out on a lot of link clicks as a result of that KSU athletic campaign that we have done. At the beginning of third quarter, Facebook drove a large portion of our link clicks. Due to the reduced number of Facebook, we are seeing a reduction in organic social media content clicks. These are all organic social media stats, and they do not include our advertising numbers. No advertising dollars have been directed to these results that you are seeing. This is a further breakdown of our organic social media stats. In the previous slide, we had not factored in the impressions from Pinterest and YouTube, and we are still growing our platforms with those audiences. As we diversify away from Facebook, our goal is to gain larger audiences on other platforms such as Twitter, Instagram, and Pinterest. We understand Instagram is owned by Facebook. However, the platform is primarily used by a different audience than those that use Facebook on a regular basis. Just how many websites did you review today? During the third quarter, our VisitManhattanKS.org website had sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine views with an average visit of one minute and thirty seconds. We keep a close watch on our page views, keywords, and downloads. As we market to our surrounding states, two thousand and twenty is interesting as consistently California is looking at Manhattan. These California visits for this quarter are coming from Mountain View, Menlo Park, San Jose, and Los Angeles. And note, Mountain View and Menlo Park are all in the San Jose area. We are still delving into that as to see what the reason is that California likes us. We have our own personal reasons for that as to what we think, but we might see a real influx in our visitation as well as our relocation from California. Stay tuned. Our electronic monthly newsletters continue to do well. Manhattanan is designed for our leisure traveler, and our meet in Manhattan is for our meeting planners. Our open rate for both of these newsletters are consistently above the average open rate of eight percent, which is determined by constant contact. So again, we feel very good that the information that we are putting in there is information that our consumers are wanting to see. Bingo certainly made summer Monday nights something to look forward to. We started our bingo fun in the second quarter, completing it in the third quarter. What did we gain from that? We gained strong partnerships, sixteen winners, additional email subscribers, and increased social media interaction. We want to thank Dave Lewis for making our Oh Manhattan Bingo fun and educational. And we also learned what to do when technology chooses to be stubborn. We had one Monday night that we had a solid one hundred that was our max that we could have, and the technology didn't work. So how do you pivot and go to Plan B? And investments do indeed pay off. As a result of our being involved with Tour Kansas, where Kansas communities come together to market Kansas as a destination to bus tours, the Broadway Bus Tour from Texas stayed in Manhattan on August twentieth and twenty-first. They came to enjoy the Flint Hills at our many, many offerings. They overnighted in Manhattan, and this tour group enjoyed stops throughout the Flint Hills region. As you know, the best place to understand the Flint Hills is to begin your stop at the Flint Hills Discovery Center. Forty-two participants of all ages toured Manhattan, Concordia, Wamigo, and the Tall Grass Prairie Preserve as they headed south. We love organized sports. While indoor conferences have declined, twelve outdoor sporting events during the third quarter helped create an economic impact in Manhattan. You'll notice that twelve, that economic estimated impact during the third quarter was down due to a canceled soccer tournament that was scheduled for this fall. This cancellation was not due to COVID, rather the fact that teams are choosing to play elsewhere, such as Kansas City, rather than further out. However, we're showing you how different sports looked during the third quarter. Turtle Creek was a site of the Cabela's King Cat Tournament, which was originally scheduled for April and became a reality on Saturday, August the twenty-ninth. Catfish anglers from Kansas, Oklahoma, Iowa, and South Dakota traveled with their truck, trailer, and boat to Manhattan for the weekend. This tournament hosted twenty-one competing teams. The winning team, can't go too far from home, was from Blue Rapids. And they're pictured here with their catch. The big cat weighed in at forty-three-point-one-seven pounds. And yes, they had to catch and release. So that fish is still in the bottom of Turtle Creek. The championship for the King Cat Tournament will be back in the region at Milford Lake later on this month, October thirtieth and thirty-first. Manhattan's signature race is indeed the Bill. Typically, we welcome over fifteen-hundred runners for this competition. Moved from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day Monday, the Bill Snyder Half pivoted from finishing on the fifty-yard line to finishing in our downtown Manhattan. Over five hundred runners competed this year, with our very own Jason Smith competing. And you can wear a mask, and you can stop in the office, and you can see his medal as proof that he ran. By finishing downtown, this made for a quicker course, which Joe Moore of Manhattan set the record of one hour, five minutes, and twenty-four seconds. Way to go, Joe! The Colbert Hill Charity Classic was a ninth annual charity classic held, and it had a field of a hundred and twenty-six golfers. Colbert Hills is one of the longest courses they played all year, as well as having some of the trickiest greens. The speed and indulation of the greens gave players a tough time as they battled to break par. While the players posted higher numbers than usual, some players were able to battle through the wind, length, and greens and post a good score. Chris Nagel from Wildwood, Missouri, took home twenty-five thousand dollars in the victory after winning in a playoff against Chandler Phillips from Huntsville, Texas, who put together one of the best rounds of the day. The All-Pro Tournament thanks Colbert Hills and the volunteers who helped make that tournament possible. A special thank you goes to head professional Steve Gocci, tournament director Bernie Haney, and superintendent Matt Grillay. The APT starts their fall series at the Crown Colony Challenge at Crown Colony Country Club in Lufkin, Texas, in October. Actually, it's going on now because it started yesterday and will be completed tomorrow. So on Saturday, September the twenty-sixth, it had to be one of the hottest and one of the windiest days that we could schedule to host the third annual leading Kansas gravel duro bike race. With over a hundred-plus gravel riders competing, this race is primed to only get better year after year. Six-time sections within the race make for a unique challenge while riders enjoy the beauty of the Flint Hills on this tough seventy-six-mile course. Prior to COVID, we were on course to host over four hundred riders for this race. Again, we would like to thank Ben Siegel with the Manhattan Running Company, Dave Colburn and Bill Sacks with Pathfinder, and our very own Marcia Rozell, who worked diligently to make this event a reality. All of these events hosted through the third quarter helped to accomplish our mission statement, and that is to expand the local area economy by attracting visitors. As we usher in the fourth quarter, we look forward to an early KSU graduation as well as having the holiday spirit begin to fill the air. We want to remind our listeners to shop local and to shop often. And with that, who has the first question for me?
Yes, thank you, Karen. That was excellent. I appreciate all the information. Questions or comments for Karen?
I was talking to someone the other day who had... There was supposed to be some kind of a tournament a couple of weeks ago. Instead of the usual large turnout of teams, it was way down. Is that generally, when we have tournaments, sporting tournaments, are we finding that there's half the number of teams that there would normally be? Or do you have any idea what that looks like?
As Marcia had reminded me with the... When we were looking at our numbers for sporting events, truly, let's talk about soccer. I think you're talking about baseball.
Probably.
Yes. There are a lot of other communities that have nicer facilities. What we're finding in the soccer venue is there's a lot of soccer teams that are in the Kansas City area. And we all know what Kansas City has created. And with COVID, they're just finding it's easier for them to compete amongst themselves than to travel any distance. So it's really been, no pun intended, a whole ball of wax with that, with COVID just really causing organizers, team sports, to rethink. Do they want to travel? Do they want to come and play? So I think it's... We need to be aware of that, as to what our limitations are, and be able to move forward.
The other half of the question, are we finding that... Are they given the excuse that the mask mandate is being any kind of an issue? I know that there was some talk earlier this summer about some events at the Blue Mont, and the people wanted to be able to sit in their rooms facing the same direction and not have to have their mask on. Are we hearing that that's a detriment to attracting?
Yes, it's my understanding in that we have lost a few meetings that even with social distancing and being proper to sit in a meeting all day with a mask on is discouraging to some. And so, still like Manhattan, still like choosing Manhattan, but right now, for some of those, they are making a decision to go elsewhere. I will also say, though, that meeting planners are somewhat hesitant. Certainly are very cognizant of the need to wear a mask, but they also don't want to be that site, that group, that organization that gathered together and then a spike came as a result of it. So it's kind of twofold. I wish I could put a real finger on it and say, this is the sole reason. I think the sole reason is that of COVID.
Onto the third question. I was talking with the city manager of Junction City a few weeks ago, and he said that they had been having their highest sales tax collections the last three months over there. Partially, yeah, people are flocking to Junction City. The Fort Riley soldiers can't go to Aggieville, so they've got to go eat and drink somewhere. I'm just... Are we making ourselves too much of at a disadvantage, even against our close neighbors? Because, well, between our school system, been doing the hybrid thing, everybody else in the close areas going to school. We're the only ones with the mandate. You go to pizza joints in St. George or Wamigo, and people, nobody's wearing a mask in places like that. I'm concerned that we're... And I talked to other people. I had a patient from Centralia area, and they said this, like, we used to come down to Manhattan every week for something, and now we only come down here about once a month. And sometimes, they say sometimes it's a mask mandate. It may be just the inconvenience. But I think we're still putting the impression out there that Manhattan is a dangerous place to go. And because, yeah, it's like between the school being on the thing, the mandate still being in place, and a lot of other places are loosening up a little bit. And I think if we really want to get people to start showing up, we've got to somehow let people know that, hey, we're no more dangerous. We may not be safer than the rest of the world, but we're no more dangerous than the rest of Kansas. And it's still a good idea to come hang out with us and take whatever precautions you want. But I think we've got to get to the point where Manhattan just doesn't seem dangerous to the sixty-to-eighty-mile, at a minimum, area of people that would normally come to Manhattan, like I said, once a week or something for stuff. And I don't know if you're hearing any of that, seeing any of that. I get that from the people that I... That come to town occasionally. So it's... That's one of my concerns, is that we're putting ourselves at an economic disadvantage by having some of that stuff too... The screw's too tight on some of those things and making it too inconvenient for people or making it seem scary. We don't want to give people another reason not to come to town. And I would like to look at that here soon and reevaluate whether that's... We need to keep all that stuff in place.
Sure. Well, Commissioner, you've made great observations. I don't have a specific answer for you, unfortunately. I can speak, Commissioner Butler is a part of our steering committee. And at the steering committee last week, as we had each one of the respective members of that committee speak, certainly the hospitality industry, whether you are a lodging, dining, or an attraction, all have been affected greatly. Many of our restaurateurs said that their business has been cut about in half because of half of the seating that you have. I think, bottom line, as people understand what the precautions are, you still have to make a personal choice if it's right for you to go or not. I think we, as a Convention and Visitors Bureau, as a chamber, as a city, are doing our best to encourage people to come and visit. Here's what our ordinance is, how we expect people to come to enjoy our community. I can tell you across the board, each one of those lodging, dining, and attractions are doing their very best to provide a safe environment for people to come to. But at the end of the day, it still has to be that individual's personal choice if they feel comfortable enough in coming. Other questions for me?
Yeah, I was going to say, Karen, I think there's also a lot of people that are coming because of the mask mandate. I hear a lot of people saying, well, I'm not going to go to such and such store or do something because they don't have certain precautions in place. I wanted to know, you showed us the hospitality, the lodging numbers. How do we... How does it look throughout the nation? Because we have an idea of Manhattan, Kansas, but how is that represented within the state of Kansas and within the nation? Because this is all over the place.
Right.
As far as events and conferences, meetings, it's for everything. So it's not just a... It's not just us.
We're, yeah, we're a snapshot of what is happening across the board. I was in a conversation today. I had not seen the report, but they were talking about the number of hotels that are in America and how many hotels will be in America next year at this point in time. It's difficult. You can't keep hotels open if nobody is coming. And so, that's a challenge. I don't have that information. I can get that information for you as to how we are performing against the state of Kansas. I should have brought my STAR report. That would give you a snapshot. Overall, we're all down. So I could get you that for the state of Kansas if that would be helpful for you.
And the reason I ask is, every time I listen to the news, what I'm hearing is the hospitality industry and airplanes. So traveling has decreased considerably, and people often come to conventions and such by flight. So more people are driving everywhere now. And the proximity matters as far as when you talk about a conference and you're with each other six hours a day. I think those are the apprehensions people are having. The other side to that is a lot of people have to cut their budgets for travel. So there's a less line item for travel and conferences.
Yes.
And they've gone on to Zoom and breakout sessions via Zoom because of the budget constraints. So there's a whole lot of elements in the decrease of it. But on the upside, we do have several outdoor events that have been successful, like you showed, with the races and the bike races and such, and even the football games, K-State football games. So there are some precautions that are being taken, and people are adhering to them. And compared to some of the other communities in the state of Kansas, our numbers are decreasing. So we are going in the right direction. And I think that's hopeful, not only for our schools, but for people wanting to have that assurance to go out and eat now or go out and be with their friends. People aren't even having their little backyard gatherings, so it's not just about restaurants or anything of that sort. But they might be this little bit more of, oh, our numbers are going down, and maybe if everybody is adhering to the same precautions, there's a sense of security. And I think we are at a place where everybody is following them. For the most part, I see them all following it. So I feel optimistic. And even though it looks really bad right now, I also wanted to know how the CARES Fund is helping you or the hospitality industry in Manhattan. I don't know how that's been allotted. I know there's been a lot of stimulus packages out there.
Yeah.
And what are you seeing for the hotels?
Well, I believe that some of the dollars that have been directed our way, meaning the chamberway, there have been a lot of small businesses that have indeed taken advantage of that. And those small businesses being hospitality. And possibly, Jason, you could address that better than I.
Thank you, Karen. Jason Smith, Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. We are in process right now of evaluating a little over two hundred applications on the CARES funding that came through the county. Two and a half million was set aside for small businesses. As a reminder, those are for businesses fifty employees or under. We have not gotten an official word on... The state had a program that they took applications from, what, about two months ago? We have not received any official word as to who received funds from that. But anecdotally, I've heard from several hospitality businesses who did receive funds through the state program, and I assume those will be issued soon. And then, of course, the loan fund that you all approved that we administered. I would say roughly fifty percent of those were restaurants or hospitality-related businesses. So is there any other programs that I'm...
No, I wasn't sure how it is for just hotels alone. I know, like, when I talk hospitality, I think we're grouping in a lot of restaurants and everything. I know, like, when I talk hospitality, I think we're grouping in a lot of restaurants and everything else. But I meant specifically to heads and beds or to hotels, per se.
We're still reviewing those applications. And that should, that should be coming out in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And probably, corporations are probably going to do better than your local hotels. But hopefully, we have a certain percentage that gives preference to local.
Except, yeah, as a reminder, 50%, excuse me, 50 employees or less. And there is a local ownership requirement on those funds, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jason. Other questions for Karen or anybody from the chamber?
Just want to ask one other thing. Like, Commissioner had us all mention, you know, that we lost that one conference at the Bluemont because they didn't want to wear masks inside. How many have we lost?
I'm.
Because of the ordinance?
Yeah, the one that you were speaking of. And then I had a phone call last week of two meetings we were not aware of. But it was a gentleman called to let me know that they had chosen another community because their, their folks didn't want to wear masks.
Okay, and I find that interesting because, you know, maybe there's some things we could do to prevent that. Because as I mentioned to one of the hoteliers that wanted to know what to do, if you just gave everybody coffee and donuts, it would fit under the restaurant rules. And they could all sit there with masks off as long as they were feeding their faces. And to me, it just doesn't pass the common sense test. If, if people want to come to a conference and sit six feet apart and not wear a mask, and it doesn't bother them, why should it bother the city commission? And if it's costing the city money and we just put millions of dollars into a conference center, I think it needs to be relooked. Because there should be some different set of rules to, you know, give some people a little bit more freedom of maneuver. Because as Mark said, Junction City is doing quite well, you know, picking up the business. And I just see that as a, as a real interesting bump in the, bump in the road. And it's a self-inflicted wound on our part.
Thanks, Karen. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. We'll see you in fourth quarter, and it'll be here in a blink of an eye.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Can I just pull this?
The next item this evening for our work session is an update of the Resilient Wildcat Creek Project and Flood Plane Management Activities. Chad Bunter, our Assistant Director of Community Development, will be presenting this evening. Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on our efforts to better protect Manhattan residents and businesses from flooding. Kind of set the stage a little bit. We have over 330 properties that are located in a high-risk flood zone. And we take that number pretty serious and work real hard to reduce that number or better protect them, I guess is a better way to state that. As you know, at least on Wildcat Creek, we've had several flood events being located at the confluence of two rivers and a creek. Flooding's always been a part of Manhattan's history. And we've had some recent history where we've had a lot of impact by flooding. After the 2011 flood, the citizens and city and county commissioners, staff from the city and the county, and our state and federal partners came together to work to create this flood plane management plan for Wildcat Creek. This was adopted in 2013. And just kind of a quick update on a number of the items that we've done since that time it's been adopted. And I'll go over some of the bigger ticket items, if you will, from this action plan. But we've, we've done seven of the, what, 11 or 12? Eight of the, whatever it is, 12 or so action items there. And have worked real hard to knock all those items off our list. And the one I'll also point out here is our community rating system rating. This is a FEMA program where they basically evaluate our efforts in flood plane management, stormwater management. And it highlights, or it kind of calculates a lot of the things we've already done from this management plan. And right now, we have a category six, which means everyone that has a flood insurance policy in a high-risk zone gets 20% off of their flood insurance premium. So pretty proud of that. We're one of three communities in the state that has that category. Samantha Eskerbrook, who's our resiliency planner, and I are working to bump that up to a level five or a level four. It takes a little bit more work and paperwork, but we're getting there to where we hope to get at least a 25 or 30% reduction. So we're proud of our work we've done. And highlight, I want to highlight a few of these because they kind of set the stage of where we're at. The first is our flood mapping efforts. In 2015, we got a new set of flood maps, FEMA flood maps. And with that, we were able to incorporate future conditions flood mapping. A lot of you have heard me talk about this, but I'll reiterate the fact or the point. The FEMA maps are really a snapshot, snapshot in time. And when we took that photo of the land and the developments in our watersheds was 2010 for maps that were adopted in 2015. So a lot changes in that, changed in that five years in Manhattan. And so because of that, we developed this future conditions model that basically took our, took the same FEMA flood model, all the nuts and bolts within it, but added in all the undeveloped land as if it was developed out in the future based on our comprehensive plan. So for Wildcat Creek, if you were to look to the, to the south of the creek where there's now ranchland that's vacant, our comprehensive plan shows that that would be homes in the future. So the model projected that out. The runoff from those homes were accounted and created this future conditions flood zone. On the FEMA maps, there is Zone X, so they have no real direct impact to your flood insurance premium. Only the FEMA zones do here in blue and the hatch marked white. But we've, and I'll share with you in a moment, we have incorporated it into a set of flood plane regulations. So we did the future conditions flood model for Wildcat Creek. And then on the Blue Riverside along Marlat Ditch. So we only have the area, the yellow area along the Marlat Ditch basin. We didn't have enough funds available to do all the city. But if you think about it, the majority of this area, for example, the Dix and parts of the Brooks, was already built out completely. And so there wasn't a whole lot of future condition to model for. What you see is what you get. So we did not model that area. But we modeled our growth areas along Wildcat Creek and then Marlat. So again, they're showed, they show on our flood maps as Zone X, more so for information purposes of what the flooding could be in the future. But we took that a step further and created a set of higher standard regulations. They, these regulations are no doubt some of the highest in the region or in the state, and even in the Great Plains. We're really, we have really strived to, to make sure that our regulations are addressing our needs. The first one is our flood protection elevation. So kind of the tried and true method with flood plane regulations to make sure that your homes and businesses are above the flood elevation. And so for Wildcat Creek and along Marlat, we require all new buildings, or improved buildings, or substantially damaged buildings to be a foot above that future conditions elevation. So that those homes and businesses are going to stay dry in today's flood and then in the future floods. In areas where we don't have that future condition model, such as like the Dix area, parts of the Brook streets, we require those homes to be two feet. The standard in the state, well, the FEMA standard is just above the base flood elevation. For the state of Kansas, it's one foot above the base flood elevation. So we're at least two feet above the FEMA, or, yeah, two feet above the FEMA BFE. And in some parts along Marlat and Wildcat Creek, we're closer to three or four feet. So we're, we've tried to address the floods today as well as in the future. We also lowered our threshold for substantial damage. That is a big set of regulations to address existing structures. The FEMA standard and the standard in the state is 50% of that fair market value after a flood. So if a flood damage, flood causes damage to a house at 51% of that fair market value, then that house needs to come into compliance. Either be elevated, close openings, there's a variety of things you can do. For non-residential, you can flood-proof to the same, same threshold or same elevation. What we've added was a set of standards that address repetitive flooding. So if your home or business is damaged by two floods in a 10-year period that equals or exceeds 25% of that average between the two, then we're going to determine that substantial damage. So my house gets flooded in year two, or year one, at 20%. And then at year seven, it's damaged at 40%. That would average out to 30%. We would determine it to be substantially damaged and work with that homeowner to bring their house into conformance. Generally, that means raising their house or moving their house. I mean, there's a variety of ways you can do it. But it gets to the point that without that lower threshold, properties just flood, repair, repeat, and we don't make any headway in better protecting our properties. Similarly, we changed the threshold for substantial improvements where it's a cumulative effort. So from when we adopted the regulations, we add up every new substantial renovation or building addition. And then once, either that one-time building addition of 50%, we bring that property into conformance. Or if they add up over several additions or whatnot to 50%, then that's when we would bring in a conformance. If that regulation gets to someone doing several small building additions that never gets to that 50%, but they've slowly built their footprint larger, and we don't improve anything. So that gets to that point. And then the last one is decompensatory storage. I apologize for the graphic to be a little grainy. But the idea here is, if we put substantial amount of fill for a subdivision or some development, if that fill raises the base flood elevation a tenth of a foot higher, then our regulations say that you need to find a way to reclaim 1.2x the amount of fill you put in, in the flood plane, to remain, to maintain that capacity. Without it, one could just fill and fill and fill on one side of the bank, and then all that storm water gets shoved over to the other side of the bank, or upstream or downstream. And we then negatively impact our neighbors. So with this compensatory storage, if we are filling in the, in our community flood plane, so not only the FEMA, but our future conditions flood plane, and you, we calculate that you're going to raise that flood elevation a tenth of a foot, then we're going to say you need to compensate for that loss of storage in the flood plane. We really haven't had to test it. We haven't had a whole lot of development after our set of regulations. The two biggest would be on the Blue Riverside with North Wing and the new apartments out there. And both of them were able to show that their amount of fill versus excavation they did on those sites did not raise that elevation. So we haven't had to really enforce this or regulate it because their drainage plans have been pretty appropriate. Any questions on our regulations or maps? A lot of you have heard this, but it's always worth another run-through. Also, following the 2011 flood, with the help of the Corps and the Weather Service and USGS, Fort Riley and the county, we installed three stream gauges on Wildcat Creek. Each of these show what the river or the creek height is. And then the one at Scenic Drive is also keyed into the Weather Service so they can project where the stream is going to crest. So that's been invaluable for our emergency responders to figure out just how high that storm is going to put the floodwaters so that we can appropriately respond. Before we had these stream gauges in place, we were literally looking at a yardstick, basically stuck to the side of a bridge pier and guessing how quickly it has risen and where is it going to stop. So we're light-years ahead of where we were before 2012. It's not a perfect system. I wish it was a little faster, but comparing to where we were, I mean, we're, we're to the moon and back comparatively. I have to also give plenty of props to Rob and Brian and his staff in the work that we've done for stormwater infrastructure. Three big projects that have really reduced the width and the flood depth of our flood planes is Vanessa Lake. This was taken last year when it was drained for maintenance. But that pond just north of Vanessa Drive has slowed the water down. That and several smaller ponds on Colbert Hills has slowed the water down, held it back to the point where we have, we've shrunk our flood plane in that area. There's still flood risk for those homes below it, for sure. It's still classified a high-hazard dam. But it definitely has helped in terms of flood protection. Another one is the Seaco Park Detention Basins. There's a chain of basins in the parkland here that has done similar efforts where it shrank our flood plane and lessened that flood risk. And also has helped with a lot of erosion that has occurred downstream of the park. And then lastly, although this picture doesn't show it real well, where this concrete lining is, is a huge, relatively big basin for this commercial area and residential area that has lessened things downstream where these apartments are, single-family homes. West Loop has had its flood plane shrunk there. There was a flood plane that stretched through the middle of the parking lot. That's gone and has lessened the flood plane south on Long Garden Way. So upstream-wise, we've done a pretty good job of building infrastructure. Now, the real problem is on the creek itself where we're really at the, I call it the bottom end of the bathtub, right next to the drain. So it's pretty challenging for us in terms of building infrastructure. There's just, we don't have the capacity to build, build infrastructure in Manhattan. And I'll get to a couple of concepts here shortly. And then lastly, our flood mitigation efforts. We've been pretty active in trying to find ways to mitigate flood-prone properties. Since 2016, we've got four grants from FEMA and the state of Kansas totaling over $2.2 million. FEMA has picked up, or FEMA and the state have picked up 75% of those project costs. And then we contribute the other 25% from our local stormwater utility fund. We've bought 10 properties. I think in your memo, I miscounted, so I apologize for that. But we have, we've bought and removed the 10, the homes on 10 properties. Nine of them, we've, nine are single-family homes, and we completely, or, excuse me, seven of those, we completely raised the structures. Two of them will move off-site. One, we've got moved out to Pot County. And the last one on Village, we're waiting the property owner to finish some agreements, and then we'll move it to Pot County also. So we're really reusing a few of those homes where we're able. Those spaces go back as open space, will remain as open space. We have some good opportunities for park ground as well as giving the flood plane back its natural use. So we have over 42 acres in land for that. And using FEMA's estimation of the benefits of mitigation dollars for the two and a half, or $2.2 million we've gotten, we're close to 15, or we're over $15 million of benefits we received in terms of life-protected, property-protected, just, you know, disruption of life, those sort of things. So pretty proud of this also. We have a lot more work to do. But really, we have made big strides in terms of addressing repetitive flood properties. Because that is the majority, well, all of the properties that we have bought have been impacted by flooding. Eight of the 10 properties were substantially damaged and repeatedly substantially damaged. So we've, we've addressed known issues there.
Yes, sir.
That 12 flex, that's one of those gardenway.
Correct.
12 flexes. Is that a?
Is that, last year, I was visiting somebody down there and I noticed it was still up. Has that been raised at this point?
Yes.
Okay, it's gone now?
Yep, it is, I think that got done in November or December. So, yep. Any questions on other efforts we've done thus far? Okay, I'm going to keep moving on then.
I wanted to mention one thing.
Yes, sir.
Have you modeled the, you know, the new bridge that's going in on Fort Riley Boulevard? Because that, that was always viewed as a point where the water got constrained, and I guess that bridge is going to have a wider bank and it may change the flow, so is that going to make substantial improvements?
I, I think naturally it would, because like you said, we are widening it. We haven't modeled it yet, I'll get to that point, but we are modeling it now with, with Wood's help, but I'll, I'll hit that topic harder in a moment. Okay, moving on to where we're at now with Resilient Wildcat Creek. You all know in, in, on Labor Day of 2018, we have a, had a devastating flood. All the efforts really, besides the mitigation work up to this point, or up to that point, was really mapping and regulatory and awareness, which are all vital things, but those efforts, although we, we addressed new development in the flood plane, we still had, like I said, over three hundred properties, about a third of those properties are in the Wildcat Creek that are existing homes and businesses. And so the resilient wild, well, the, the previous, or the, the adopted flood plane management plan really looked at addressing new development and informing new development in better ways to build. Resilient Wildcat Creek's effort was based on this premise that we can't prevent flooding and that we have to be better for our existing businesses and residents to better protect them. I would love to say we can prevent flooding, but it's just not possible. It's always going to rain, although it hasn't for a while, I'd like to see a raindrop or two, and there's always going to be a bigger storm, or infrastructure that we put in place, that storm's going to overtop it, or something we didn't anticipate, like a shed breaking loose and clogging up culverts or something. We just can't say we'll never flood here again. Anybody that tells you if you build it this way, you won't flood, especially if you're in a mapped flood plane, is a fool, and I'll tell that to anybody. So that's the premise of Resilient Wildcat Creek, is that we accept that reality and then strive to make each of these elements of disaster management better. So we, we work to mitigate properties and get flood-prone properties higher or out of the way. We prepare better so that people understand their flood risks, know how to make a disaster kit, know what a flood warning means, those sort of things. Our emergency responders and our business owners and our homeowners respond better to get out of the way of flooding, and then we recover better, so that at the next, we don't just recover and put things back and hope it never floods again, we put things back in a better manner to present, prevent future flooding, or not prevent, but protect us from future flooding. And so that is the basis of Resilient Wildcat Creek. A couple of big projects with it, or in parallel with it, Commissioner Butler, you mentioned the, the modeling. We hired Wood Infrastructure and Environmental to create a engineer-quality 2D flood model. So the FEMA maps are built on a 1D flood model. 2D takes basically the same stuff, but supercharges it in terms of what it can model, as well as how it represents that modeling in terms of images. The project we hired Wood to do was to make the model, just like it would do it for FEMA, and also train staff. We went through one round of training with staff, both in the city and county, and this was a joint project, by the way. I should really back up and say, the Resilient Wildcat Creek project was a city-county effort, and we've partnered with our state and federal agents, and then it is guided by a citizen advisory team. I mentioned, failed to mention that, I apologize. That citizen group is made of city and county residents and business owners and property owners, and they've guided us in these efforts and action plans and whatnot that were talked tonight. So back to the model, we did one round of, of training, then COVID hit, and during that time, it, it became pretty evident that as much as we value this flood model, we don't have staff with the expertise or the time to get that expertise to really use that model like we originally thought. And so we've shifted gears with Wood. We're going to forego the training. The idea was staff would get trained up, we would use it, and then we would do our own modeling. But after that first round of training and kind of getting caught up in COVID, we realized staff doesn't have that capacity, and so we will use the remaining budget that was going to be used for training to model those four elements, or at least a few of those elements. Probably that very last one, that straight channel, if we have funds, we will model it, but we don't know if we'll get there. But Commissioner, to your point, we are going to model what the new Fort Riley Bridge is so we can, we can visualize and understand just what that improvement's going to do there. Naturally, you widen something out, you raise something up, it's going to help us in one form or another, so we'll be able to see that. We're also going to look at Village Plaza, a concept of flood, flood benching, where basically you stair-step the flood plane in that area, so you reform that flood plane area to maybe to the point where we can get some redevelopable space up closer to Anderson, and then we would have different tiers of flood areas where maybe one tier is green infrastructure and parkland, and then the other is lower part of the creek. So we, we, we'll model that. Riley County wanted to model a couple of areas along the Rock Island, Old Rock Island Railroad to see if we would regrade the railroad beds or get rid of them, what would that do for some properties up in the Keats area? And then that last one, if we have funds left over, the idea is pecan circle, that area where the trailhead, the linear trail is, instead of taking a hard left and weaving your way back to the Kansas River, what if it just straight shot to the Kansas River there? What would it do for the, the flood plane? We get that comment all the time of just straighten it, just get the water out quicker. So we'll model it. I will warn everybody, that one is probably a regulatory permitting and engineering boondoggle that won't happen. It would cost too much, it would take a decade or more to get the permit, to design, get to the permits, even if permits were allowed through all the regulatory agencies. So we'll design it just to show the, the capability, or we'll model it to show the capability of, of the 2D model, but in reality, it's just not possible for a variety of reasons, cost, design, regulatory purposes. But it is an exceptional model. We can use it today, we have it in hand, the county has it in hand, and what we intend to use it for in the short term until we get staff with experience and capacity is when Rob and Brian have infrastructure projects that they need modeled, we have that element already to give to our consultant team that we hire to say, use this model, this is the best model we have, and they can design infrastructure with that. Developments, if they have a flood plane question, we can give them that model and say, design it with this in mind, or using this software in mind to better show the, the flood risks. So it's not all for lost, it's a good model and we will definitely use it, we're just tweaking how we intended to use it. And, and we'll always have it, and we'll get the experience hopefully, and capacity hopefully, and be able to use it in the future. Oh, it works, super. So this is a, a video of the 2D model at Seth Child and Anderson. So this video shows the flood depth. Yellow is the deepest and blue is shallower, so you kind of see how the floodwaters flow in and where it impacts. This looks like to be the five-hundred-year more flood, more like the 2018 flood. So that's one way we could show people how it floods very visually. This one's kind of cool, not only is it show where the floodwaters are, but it shows the velocity, so how fast the water is, and if you notice these little white dots, it is the flow patterns. So combining the velocity, the depth, and where the water flows, you'll be able to estimate where we'll have stream bank erosion. So, you know, this bank here, we probably will have issues in the future if we don't already now, and so we can better prepare for and start looking at projects to stabilize stream banks and those sort of things. So a pretty invaluable tool, like I said, we have it in hand, the, the report's stamped by the engineer, so it's done and done, and then they're going to go back and do a little bit more modeling to, for some of those elements. This one went parallel with the Resilient Wildcat Creek. It was a joint project with the county and the city. There's actually two studies there. The first one was to see if we can create two large dry detention basins on Fort Riley's military installation, shown here. That was the first one. It was basically done to see if we could have enough size to make a difference in the flood plane downstream of those two basins. We would, it had a positive benefit cost analysis, so it would in, it would be eligible for federal and state grants if we were to proceed forward with it. The problem with that one was Fort Riley was hesitant, or actually said that their Corps of Engineer and DOT regulations don't allow for large basins like that on their installation anymore. So there's still some hail mary hope, I guess you would say, that, that maybe that could be persuaded to change their mind, because they're in areas that aren't used for missions, my understanding right now, maybe I'm incorrect on that, but that one has its challenges. On its tail, we also hired Wood, the same consultant, to see if we could have the equivalent capacity of detention on smaller farm ponds throughout the farm and ranchland on the private side of Wildcat Creek, and do a similar type of benefit downstream. And so Wood set out, largely this was theoretical, of could we get this kind of capacity in place in smaller, you know, acre, three-acre kind of ponds? They were, they identified sixteen different basins on the private side, either new basins or modifying existing ones to make their, the dam higher. So in total, eighteen basins, all of them did really well for us. You could see the price tag of roughly thirty million dollars, so not a cheap project, but this next slide shows the reduction in the flood elevation across all storm events. And three feet lowering the flood plane for three feet in 2018's flood would have been significant, that would have done a lot of good for a lot of people. However, it has challenges. One, I mentioned Fort Riley. Two, I mentioned the price tag. And three, and probably the most significant, is we faced some strong opposition by Riley County farmers and ranchers when we presented this last year, or first, yes, last year, last summer, we had several farmers and ranchers that weren't in favor of doing this project, and I think you got a letter from Riley County School District Board President that had some concerns of this as well. It would do good for our flood plane, but considering all those factors, it's not a high priority of ours in terms of getting it done. But it shows you the challenge of building infrastructure that will impact Manhattan, positively impact Manhattan, doesn't exist within Manhattan. It's something that has to occur in the upper watershed if we're going to go that route to better protect our property owners and our residents and businesses.
Chad, before you go, can you go back two slides, or three, yeah, right there, the, the southern route there, that map with the thirty-eight, thirty-nine, I think?
Yep.
What is, so can you just kind of elaborate on that? I know that, I think that area, I mean, it used to be Eureka Lake area.
Actually, that one would be...
It's farther south?
Yeah, Eureka Lake's going to be down here, this would be more like Blueville, west of Blueville.
But currently, where is that? I'm trying, it's just hard to make out on the map.
Sure. So where these yellow triangles are, is Anderson Avenue, heading west towards Keats and Riley. So, and this would be the roundabout at Kimball and Anderson, so Blueville's roughly here. The creek kind of snakes through this area, so this would kind of be like where the vineyard is.
So that's, that's north, that's all north of Wildcat Creek?
Wildcat, these would be south, these three would be south of Wildcat Creek. Wildcat Creek, you know, kind of runs this way, everything else would be north of. Okay, any other questions where we're at? All right. I'll briefly touch, touch this one, this one's kind of a building block on a cool project, I think. This was a free project we got from FEMA and the state. They hired StanTech, another national engineering firm, to create a benefit estimator for us. StanTech has a proprietary software where they take a lot of our property information, flood information, appraisal information, and stuff it into this computer program. Basically, all these elements, and then they, the output is the risk for each, each structure in the flood plane, the risk, the cost to replace that property if it was damaged by flooding, and then the cost to, the cost and benefit to mitigate it. And they use, they looked at two mitigation options, buying and removing the home or business, or elevating it in place. And so this is, we did nearly six thousand structures, so not just properties, but garden sheds and garages and homes and businesses and anything that showed up as a footprint of a building in this, in this area. Oops. What did I do, Jared? Looks like I stopped sharing. What the? I'm just going to step away. It said that my thing was idle for too long.
Might just be the only one.
Okay. Sorry about that. But that project, it, it's just a start, it's for all properties in the flood plane in Manhattan, and what it'll be is a building block for a comprehensive mitigation strategy for us. So we will know, what it does is creates a, an analysis for each structure of, is it smarter to buy out or raise, you know, elevate, or do something different for all those six thousand properties? And so we'll be able to look at each one of properties or combine and look at neighborhoods or blocks to see if we want to do a comprehensive mitigation effort there. So we have that in our quiver for the future. Okay, so hit this here, our action plan, the, the Resilient Wildcat Creek Plan Update culminates with this action plan, and so we've been working towards this. We have funneled everything within those four life cycles that that we mentioned, preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation. We then further drill down into what kind of strategy it would be. Do we need to buy equipment? Is this an administrative thing that staff can accomplish? Is it comprehensive that we need a lot of elements coming together? Or is this a planning tool? We have a couple of those. And then we will shake it out further into its feasibility. Meaning, low, if it's, we don't know if it'll work all that well. It costs a bunch, there's not a whole lot of buy-in to it. Versus high, where we know it'll work. It may cost some, but it's worth it enough that we want to put a budget item together. And so we're going to shake it out that way. Now, Mayor, I have 30 items, ideas here, part of this action plan. I can go through each one if you'd like, or we can hit some summaries. I'd be happy to do that, or I can... Commissioner Hattasell saying, let's summarize, which I certainly can do. Preparedness is a big one, obviously. The more people understand with the flood risks, they can make better decisions. We have a few of them here that I'll, I will elaborate on. The stream gauge upstream of Keats is a big one for Riley County residents. City staff and city folks on the citizen advisory team were real supportive of this. But the reality is it is a county item, or it should be a county item. Right now, the information of flooding stops at Keats, and so the idea would be put something further upstream so those people have a chance to understand what's coming at them. In reality, it gives us a bit of information, but with two gauges already in the line, we are already pretty well-prepared at that time. So this would be a big one for county folks. And we would say it's a county project, but we're fully supportive of it. I will give a shout out or pat on the back to Samantha Estherbrook, our resiliency planner. She was putting together a community flood conference. Samantha and I and other floodplain managers go to conferences and now virtual conferences where we get technical detail and about mapping and modeling and regulations and outreach. And so Samantha's idea was to take that concept of a flood conference, of all those information pieces or topics, and make it for Manhattan residents. And so she put in a ton of work, and it was to occur in the last part of March. And then COVID hit and shut everything down, so we were unable to have it. But we had a lot of great speakers, engineers that do flood mapping, folks from FEMA that would talk about flood insurance, folks from the Corps to talk about mitigation efforts, not just buying or elevating, but other types. We had a good lineup, and they were excited to come and do it. It's the only one I know of that was being done. And so it's an idea we'd like to continue. Once we get back to a new normal and things calm down a little bit, we intend to do that again. So we're excited for it, we're still excited, and we just need to get through this rough patch, and we'll bring that back.
Chad?
Yes.
Before you go on to this slide, can you go back? Mark answered faster than I could. Could you go back to each one of them?
Oh, sorry. I thought that was a consensus. I apologize.
Because some of these we had discussed for a year or two, and I didn't know where we were on that plan.
You bet. I'm going to talk in a future slide about this flood risk disclosure, so I'll hold off on that. We coordinate well with Riley County, but we can always do better. So we'll work with them on better training and development review. Remote sensors is kind of a far-out idea, but one I'm pretty geeky about, where you use Internet of Things, small sensors. We already have some great stream gauges, but you could combine that with soil moisture sensors, automatic rain gauges, water quality sensors, a whole host of smaller sensors. They're cheaper than the stream gauges. And if you could create a large enough mesh or network, build a model from it, I think we could have a pretty cool idea of when the soil's high, moisture's high, and the stream's running high, and then we get a big rainstorm, then we know we're in trouble. Or you could, you know, you could do pond capacity, all sorts of stuff. And so if you could put that into one big giant model with those sensors, we would know what we're facing. It wouldn't be a cheap or quick effort in that, you know, if you did the whole gamut of things, although we could certainly do elements like rain gauges and smaller, cheaper stream gauges. But that's the remote sensing idea there. Flood insurance and preparedness outreach, that's an ongoing thing. We have a pretty good system now, but it can always be better and be strengthened with using a variety of our outreach tools, be it social media, our web presence, or just a good old-fashioned newspaper articles or whatnot. We already talked about the ponds. I will also talk about the warning signage here in a few minutes. I highlighted the 2D model, but you can, we can also further that forward. To my knowledge, no one's doing this, and like I said, we have some capacity issues. But in theory, we could take that 2D model and model in every new development we have in any part of that watershed to show what it would do upstream and downstream. That's, again, another far-out kind of idea that takes some training and capacity and the right people in place in a variety of different elements. But it's something that could be used with that 2D model, for sure.
Chad, that's the kind of preventive and future thing that I'm anxious to see. So that when we see a redevelopment or a development, that there's also information about the potential flood as we work through, as the development goes through your processes, so we can make a judgment about the future for the people that live there. And I'm really talking more about residential, because they're the people that, you know, businesses hire engineering companies, but individual people don't just, well, my house is, they graded, hauled in dirt, my street's lower, so I live on a hill. I mean, there... It's, there's a certain amount of responsibility we have to take as a community for new development, too. Not total, don't get me wrong, but certainly keeping people out of harm's way if we can. So all that's to say, I would hate to see it. Right now, it's not got a feasibility ranking. But to me, that's where it pays off.
Yep.
And there won't be any more of our stumbling into something. Or, well, we didn't know. I mean, we're going to know if we can really put this to work. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm excited about that 2D model and what that potential is. It's largely, you know, a capacity issue with the expertise of staff and the ability to, you know, it's a software, just like any other software, that unless you're in it regularly using it, you lose the information.
I think there would be students and graduate students that would be thrilled to work with something that futuristic.
Yep, and we can use it with our consultants. And so the model's there, the tool is there. We just have to get the people in place that we can train them up or have the training on the tools. So all's not lost. I would say that's probably a medium kind of...
As long as it's not lost.
But it's there. And I covered those last two. So any questions on this section?
So what do you mean by high? Do you mean high for feasibility, that it's extremely expensive? Or we can afford it? What does that mean?
It means, we anticipate it's going to work well. It has good buy-in by staff and the community. I can't say that it is cheap comparatively, but those other two factors of, we know, we think it's going to work really well, and there's good support and buy-in, that we should find ways to fund it.
So it's doable?
It's doable. This would be low-hanging fruit, so to speak. This is top priority. These are the things we should really be striving to get to first. Medium is kind of that great idea. We think it'll work well, but there's, you know, maybe not the greatest support or understanding or the capacity, kind of like to the 2D model, that puts it at medium. And the low is just the opposite of high. It's going to cost a lot. We don't know if it'll work. People aren't behind it at all, we've heard that. And so that's the definition of that low. But the high ones are going to be, these are our priorities.
Do you think in the same train of thought as Commissioner Morris, that remote sensors would be considered a preventive measure?
It could. Definitely could. I think, and there are elements that we can definitely use from it. So like rain gauges, if we, you could buy a $150, $200 rain gauge that collects it automatically, dumps it automatically, and sends it to a website automatically. Pretty powerful stuff that if we can get, you know, a mile, or you know, every section or every mile by mile, whatever, you know, you get enough of those, we have a really good understanding of our flood or our rain, rain that's coming at us. So that's an easy one to get. You know, it's just dollars there, and people willing to put it up on their property where it's unobstructed.
Might be worth an investment.
Yeah, definitely. You can get cheaper stream gauges than what we have to do similar work. It's just not tied into the Weather Service to give us as much information. So there are definitely elements that we can, we could take advantage of. The bigger, broader idea of remote sensing is this huge mesh of all different kinds of sensors all across the watershed that is modeled and gives us a complete picture of, if this pond's full because we have a sensor there and the soil's saturated with previous rain and the rain falls coming intense at us, then we know we have a problem. And we would have, you know, a day head start rather than eight hours head start. But that, that level of remote sensing is way out there. You know, that takes a lot of effort.
That's something to aim for, I think. I think that would be good, too.
But the rain gauges and the stream gauges are definitely stuff that are attainable. Just an investment.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Response. Shortlist here because we've had a lot of practice at it, unfortunately. The EOC buildout, this is one that the emergency responders routinely mention, is right now, we're using shared space. If we have a smaller event, we are at Riley County Police Department in their training room. There's not dedicated equipment, not dedicated maps and computers and those sort of things, space. It is borrowed space. A larger, more prolonged event, like last summer's flood threat from the blue, they set up the EOC in the multipurpose room at the fire station. Again, shared space, borrowed space, where there wasn't dedicated infrastructure there. And so the idea would be, one way, one how, one way, one, somehow, we would create that dedicated building that has already the, you know, the internet and the computers and the maps and the, everything that goes into running an EOC. I'm sure you know, but our fire department has two water rescue boats for rescuing people out on the lake or Kansas River or swift water during flood stages. So it can do multiple purposes there. And so naturally, keeping people trained up on how to do the best practices there is important.
Chad, I'd like to speak to the EOC build. To me, that's a building. Not necessarily a buildout, but no matter how much money, we don't have enough money for any of this at the moment.
Right.
And this building would cost us a lot, a million dollars. I don't know how much. Everything costs a million these days. And so as far as I'm concerned, this building would be more than just for flood.
Oh, definitely.
It would be all hazards. And so we're mostly focused on flood. And in this event, other events, we've been focused on COVID and all these other things. So, and it would need to be a city and a county shared EOC. I could see the county using it more intensely than our fire people do. And so I think it needs to be worked out. And, but I am afraid of the costs, considering the, we haven't even talked about how to raise any money for it. And that is a big deal that's going to take a lot of it and belongs on our capital improvement program budget rather than... So I would just, that's where I stand on an EOC building.
Yep.
These other things have a higher priority for me.
Yeah, and the reason why the, this came from the fire department, this idea, is that the more places you can put those ideas, like the EOC buildout. You put it here, you put it in a, an emergency action plan over there. You put it in the hazard mitigation plan with the county. The more places you can put it, the more people talk about it and go, that's a good idea. As well as you can point to it with, for state and federal grants to say, this is on, this is a need that we've identified through several different hazard elements or emergency elements. And so, yeah, it belongs in the capital improvement plan for both the city and the county. I think there's good opportunity for grants to help reduce some of those local costs. But the idea is to put it here, same with, same way with the dedicated mover for our boats and supplies, you know, having a truck or whatever they would need to move it. It's a capital improvement project. It could easily be funded through grants, at least partially. But you put it here so that you can point to it in a grant application and say, we recognize this is an important thing for us in this document, so give us money from this grant. So, but that's a very good point. Last couple items here. Previously, in the 2018 flood and every flood since I've been here in 2007, we've had to do things with paper and pen and a clipboard. And that doesn't work real well in a rain event or a flood event. And so our GIS Division with Public Works and myself set out, and we've built a couple of mobile apps that you can use your phone or tablet to do that same information. It's quicker, it's easier, just drop-down buttons and automatic fills and those kind of things. And then it uploads into our required databases for emergency management and FEMA post-disaster requirements. And so we've built those. Now we just need to tweak them and improve them and get them better and make sure they work right. But those are, those are things we've done in-house that are kind of innovative that we haven't... They're not existing on the federal level, for sure. The other communities have done it and used some other platforms, and we're just building off of it.
Chad?
Yes.
When you use something like that or you come up with it on your own, is there a good place to store it or is it just gone? Just for, because historically, when we have paper, you have, you can reference, refer back to it. With the data-based systems and such, do we need to buy more space or is it automatically stored? Because historically, we're going to need that as we look back and see what we need to do differently or what we did back in the day.
I think we're okay for now. That's always something to be mindful of. They're fairly lightweight in terms of kilo, you know, megabytes, gigabytes. And hopefully, we don't have very many more, you know. You always cross your fingers you don't have storms in the near future, you need more of that. But that's a great point, and we're always short of storage. And so it's always going to be a thing to worry about. Planning's always a big thing. You know, you can never plan too much. And so we have in there an emergency response plan. Take a lot of the information we have now and augment and make sure we have stuff written down for the next crop of emergency responders. We keep that institutional knowledge. The damage log is an idea I've had, and just a matter of building the website, where we can have our impacted residents or people that drive by and see a flooded yard or whatever, take a photo and upload it into a website that's mapped. So we have a better, broader idea of the flood risks. And we could even use it for some kind of... And we could even use it for some kind of predictive elements there. But that's what that crowdsourced damage log is. Again, I touched on the, uh, recovery plan, and then Park and Rec has a, a need for some, uh, management software, and I think they're, they're in the process of getting that to manage their, um, improvements, their repairs, and then in this context, damages from flooding. Um, so they would like a soft, software element where after the flood, they can go out and say, you know, "These things are broken in Annenberg Park," or along, um, linear trail, et cetera, and be able to track that. Better tracking then correlates to better reimbursement from, um, FEMA for public disaster assistance as well as, you know, grants and those kind of things. So all that, better data collection equals, uh, better output is the idea. Last element here, long element, um, a green infrastructure and recreation plan is on the list. Um, just kind of figuring out, um, how we can recreate some of the open spaces we have, um, and then have that built in as part of a, a floodplain management element. Having that natural, those natural, um, property, or those open spaces be part of the floodplain as well. I mentioned the mitigation benefit estimator, that's what that individual property mitigation, uh, piece is there. So building out that full, uh, comprehensive mitigation plan for all three hundred and thirty properties. What to do with some of those flood, uh, properties we purchased for buyouts? Uh, we have, I said, forty acres, and I think there's a really good opportunity to, um, regrade some of those spots, replant some of those areas, so they're more beneficial for, uh, the environment, habitat, fish and birds and animals and flood, you know, um, water quality, those sort of things, so that's what that is. Uh, I mentioned previously the redevelopment ideas that could happen along, uh, Garden Way and Village Plaza. We're in the very, 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 very early stages of a EPA grant, um, with the Flint Hills Regional Council of, um, looking at the Village Plaza area, because that has a brownfield site on it. So how, we can use some EPA dollars to redevelop that area maybe, and work with those property owners. Um, routinely, we hear about log jams as a significant issue, and they certainly are. There's, there's a couple of pretty big log jams, um, south of town. We removed a really big one, um, next to the linear trail that was causing us issues. That one is a high priority for some, although it's extremely problematic because, uh, most of Wildcat Creek is on private, private property. And so having a city plan to just take really big tonka truck toys and tear out log jams isn't all that easy because you're crossing on someone else's land, it's costly, you have to put back stream banks and those sort of things. So that's a priority, but it is a challenging one, um, and we just have to work through how best to, to handle that.
Can I make a comment about that? Because, because we've had, they've had the same problem on Little Kitten Creek, which is pretty much in there, and then the cities helped mitigate a couple that I know of on Little Kitten Creek where log jams and... And that's important to look at because as I talked to Public Works, uh, if the homeowners just leave it, it all winds up in the culverts.
Yeah.
Then it trashes the culverts and the city street and everything. And so I, I'd like to see that moved up on priority because, because when some of those old trees fall down, and you get these giant sycamores and stuff, you can, you can just get some major damage to our infrastructure. Now, I also agree, you know, the city probably shouldn't pay for all of it. And I know the mitigations on, uh, Little Kitten Creek, the city paid some. The homeowners paid the lion's share.
Right.
But, uh, it, it, it worked out a little bit better, so I think, uh, you know, we've already had some successes in that. And I don't think it's that difficult, we, we need to move that up on the priority list.
Okay, definitely take a look at that. Yeah, it, it is definitely an issue. I mean, one log collects another log, and it becomes a, a pretty big thing. And then it breaks loose and goes and impacts a bridge or a culvert, for sure, that is an issue. It's just the complications of, uh, how's the city tell a, a rural Riley County farmer to go clean up your trees? Or how do we pay, you know, there's, there's some complexities there that we just need to work through.
Yeah, I agree, and the county and the city, though, can just be part of the code, that, you know, it's got to go, it'd be a code violation.
Definitely.
And other communities have had this problem and figured it out, so. And I, I agree with Wayne that it needs to, uh, be higher than nowhere.
You bet. Yeah, and we haven't filled in that, and I'll elaborate on that in a moment. Uh, I'll talk to you on the dedicated funding in a second. Uh, the social vulnerability index, real quickly on that. Uh, we used, uh, the help from the Centers for Disease Control to create a web map for, uh, social vulnerable, vulnerability index. Basically taking census data for block group level census. Block group level census information on a variety of different elements, such as internet usage, uh, English as a second language, disabilities, elderly, kids, uh, renters, homeowners, the whole, a lot of different elements. The idea is we'll take all of these action plans and any other future great ideas and funnel it through that, uh, SVI, that social vulnerability index. So if someone says, "Boy, great idea would be to just create a website and social media accounts, and we'll just blast everybody with, 'Go here for more information,' and 'Go here for warnings,' and, and whatnot." Which is a great idea, but maybe there is a neighborhood that has a lower-than-average, uh, percent of internet usage. So it's a great idea for the rest of the community, but that neighborhood, maybe not the best idea. So then we have to figure out a strategy to address that idea. Or maybe we know one neighborhood has a, um, a high level of folks with disabilities or, uh, a high number of elderly folks. Um, when we're doing emergency response planning, we should look at those and go, "We should have a few more people to help out in those neighborhoods in alerting people and evacuations and getting people out sooner, rather than wait till the end and go, 'Oh, bye, there's, there's some folks down there that need our help, and we don't have enough people to go help them.'" So using that in a lot of our ideas. Um, maintenance, we talked about, the maintenance of mitigation property, kind of going back onto that. How do we, um, how do we, uh, take care of those to give it, um, more benefit, natural benefits? Stream bank stabilization's a fairly obvious one, I think. We can identify with our 2D model areas where, um, we got a high suspicion that we're going to have, uh, stream bank issues and create a program to, uh, improve those. We have a couple of areas in town now that the stream bank has eroded enough that they're literally feet away from the house and the foundation. So, uh, it's a scary deal that, um, right now, that's all private property, and, and it's not a cheap fix, and we don't have it budgeted, and does a homeowner have a, a stake in that? And probably yes, and so we just have to work through all those complicated elements to, to better protect folks. Um, and then the mitigation policy, um, those last two I've already touched on, or will touch on. So, um, kind of highlight a few that I know, uh, you all have brought up, and we've heard you, and we're working on them. Uh, public warning signs. This is one, uh, is the Core that Built for Florence, a small town south of here in Marion County. It's more of a historical element of, "This is what the flooding has happened." It's got a historical picture there of back in the day, and it has, uh, you know, websites so you can get more information. So this is something we definitely could, um, create. Riley County with the help of the Core has created one that's on South Manhattan. Uh, as you cross Wildcat Creek, uh, to highlight the flood risks on Hunter's Island. So we have, um, they just put that up not so long ago, I just haven't been out that way to take a photo. Um, but we can definitely do something like that in certain areas, kind of highlight the, uh, the flood risk more of in a, uh, historic contextual element. And then we can also do, uh, more warning sign type things, "Turn around, don't drown, this is a high flood risk zone," uh, those sort of things. So they're both within our capacity, and we'll, we'll work to figure out where best to put them and, and get those up. The other one that you have mentioned was, uh, a tenant hazard notification. Uh, so we did some research, surprisingly, this isn't all that, um, common. Uh, Lawrence has one that we've, we've borrowed some language from. Um, Oklahoma has an extremely limited one for its renters, and then California has a pretty robust one. So we've, we've borrowed some language from all those. Um, the idea here would be, this would be an ordinance or an amendment to our floodplain regulations, where the ordinance would require that anybody interested in ba, uh, renting a business or, um, an apartment or a house, uh, in the floodplain, in a high-risk flood zone, they would need to be, um, given a notice that says, "Hey, this is a flood risk zone, a high-risk flood zone." Have these four elements on it. It, I want to be real clear, because I know some people were, have been kind of freaked out about this, is, um, this would not amend or augment or be part of the lease agreement in any way, this would be a separate document. We would, um, create a draft or a sample one so that landlords and property owners could use. The reason it won't be tied directly to that lease is that some people were afraid that we were getting our hands into someone else's contracts. I get it. And so we'll just have this thing set on the side that, um, that, uh, landlords and property owners will need to abide by to give to the potential tenants. Basically saying, "This isn't a flood risk zone, it could flood, uh, not only the house, but parking lots and those sort of things. You have a lot, have a risk to your life and property because of the flooding, and that there's insurance available, um, to help you with that." So.
Chad?
Yes.
I, I am on the, uh, Wildcat Creek Flood Resiliency Group, and I was afraid that there would be a lot of resistance to this by owners or landlords. And I was so pleased that McCullough Development has, as big as they are, have already, and they implemented it, I don't even know how long ago, months, I think. But to know that they're leading the way, and maybe some others have too, are you aware of other?
I'm not aware of other, others.
Property managers or property owners?
Yeah, I'm not aware, but I also haven't gone and surveyed anybody either.
I haven't either, huh, huh. But anyway, I just wanted to say, as large as they are, they've made that commitment. And I just think that is praiseworthy, so I wanted to mention it.
I would agree. I was real pleased to hear that they've already implemented something like that, so, and that's great to hear.
Chad?
Yes.
So when you say, uh, flood insurance, are landlords that are in this area, in a flood zone area, already required to buy, uh, flood insurance, or is that up to the renters?
Um, if a property has a federally backed mortgage, the property owner would need to have the flood insurance. The tenant would not, there's no requirement for the tenant. It'd be an exceptionally good idea, and there's rent available for those tenant, or excuse me, there's insurance for those renters to get, but it's not automatically provided, but generally not automatically provided, uh, by the property owner or the property manager. And that's kind of the point of this, is you're in a flood area, you got risks, your landlord's insurance doesn't cover it, your typical renter's insurance doesn't cover it, you should be considering renter's insurance to cover it.
Typically, it's the financing organization that insists on the, uh, flood insurance, because they are backing the investment. But if you pay cash, or you own something outright, then there's nothing to force you to get flood insurance. But, uh, a lot, you know, most, that, that, anyway, just to draw a line there.
Yeah, but the key point, the key point here is, you know, the owner of the property, that's property insurance, it's the personal property. If you're a renter, you're not worried about, you know, the structure, you're not going to rebuild it. The problem is, everything you own personally is in there, and if it gets destroyed by the flood, you get nothing.
Right.
Unless you buy your own personal renter's insurance. And that's why it's, it's very important to, to put that in as part of the, uh, part of the process. Now, if it's not part of the lease, how do we know the renter's getting it?
Well, and, you know, even to that point, even if it was part of the lease, there's, unless we're alerted to it, there's less chance the city staff would know, um, that this notice has made it into it, right?
So this would have to maybe be part of the rental registration program?
Yeah.
You know, one, if you register, you have to do this, so we could follow through, and then I guess renters could, uh, probably take issue if it didn't happen and they got flooded.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, um, implementing something like this, it's envisioned, uh, one, we would use our own website to, we already have some pretty good information there, but we would fill in as needed for renters on what, what they need to know. We would use our rental registration to alert those property owners and landlords and property managers that this is here, you have to do this. And we could, we can even get to the point that's, you know, this property owner has to do it, this one on the other side of the street outside of the floodplain doesn't have to do it. We can pretty be direct pretty much about it. Um, and then from there, it's, you know, it's going to be similar to a lot of other things. People are just going to have to alert us about it and, and be informed and, um, those sort of things. But we would make it part of a zoning violation, so if someone doesn't fall through, fails to give that notice, um, then it would be like a zoning violation, up to five hundred dollar, right now, up to five hundred dollars of penalties per instance and jail time potentially. Not that I think that we would ever get to that extreme, but that's the, the stick behind the, the whole program, so.
Chad, our rental registration system, uh, needs to be beefed up. Uh, it's lagging seriously behind. I'm aware of some rentals that were reported some, several times, that have never been updated. And I don't know what's wrong with it, but I suspect it's just not being maintained.
Gotcha.
So I'm not but willing to build a house of cards based on the rental registration system. So there has to be something that is reliable, is what I, with regard to flooding. Rental registration is not life and death kind of thing like flooding is, so that's
Right.
how I look at it.
Yeah, and we would use that database to build our, uh, our, our mailing, mailing list, so to speak. Um, so we can take that database and plug it into our flood maps and say, "These are flood risk properties, pull that list out and be able to mail it." Uh, there are other ways we can do it for sure, uh, but that would be the simplest one, and we have that database in hand.
You know, typically, our mobile home courts are built in floodplain, flood pro, I'm going to say, I'm going to start my own word of flood-prone.
Sure.
Because I get in trouble with all your technical definitions. But I think that, um, making sure that we build something so that people in those mobile home courts are for sh, get, that we do our best. I mean, so during the last flood on Blue, the Blue, what, last year,
Mm-hmm.
there was an issue because the city was saying with confidence, "We're notifying everybody." We sent a letter to every address with, uh, uh, with a water bill. Mobile home court people don't get a water bill.
Right.
Their court gets one bill.
Yeah.
And at the la, uh, you know, and I, anyway. So there had, that, that specific issue, and it could affect apartment dwellers also, and any, any multiple, multi-living situation. We need us, to make sure that we cover, uh, the, the, those situations and, and with certainty, and not just throw it a bone or something, so, okay.
Heard loud and clear, agree with you completely. Um, okay, as you noticed in that, in those tables, a lot of those elements were not finished out yet. Our plan, um, I think it's going to occur this week. Uh, Samantha's pulling double duty for us. She's a resiliency planner, as well as our board of zoning appeals planner, and she has a lot of cases this month, so she's been very busy. Um, but the idea is that we will take those elements of that action plan that I gave you, and we're going to send it out to everyone that has been involved, uh, shown interest in our resilient Wildcat Creek, and provide them with a survey so they can help us fill in the gaps. What are the things we're missing? Prioritize these, what should they be? Um, and so we can get a good, uh, a good amount of feedback on just what priorities are. And your, your input has been very helpful. Um, we met with them last, two weeks ago. Um, and so, uh, we've introduced these topics and got a little bit of feedback. We're going to use this online survey to get more and, uh, get the priorities of what those things should be, and fill in any holes that we may have missed in terms of ideas. And then we will complete the action plan, uh, finish up the mitigation, or excuse me, the floodplain management plan update. Uh, Samantha's got some really cool ideas where it will live, uh, online and not be a static three-ring binder document, PDF or anything like that. But because we're dealing with maps, we're dealing with projects that are ever-evolving and changing, it'll live on. it'll live online and be a pretty cool, pretty cool thing for us. And so that's where all that will live. And so by the first of next year, we will, we should have that buttoned up and back to you for review, back to the citizen group for review, then to you and the county and hopefully adopt by first quarter of next year is the hope. Cross our fingers with Board of Zoning Appeals projects because that's what Samantha's also working on, but she works hard. So we'll see where we get.
There are several of these that require county, county collaboration. And if they are not functioning and have not been with regard to this project, I'd like for us to brainstorm a bit about how to get them involved and whether that means commissioners or management or whoever. We need a strategy to make sure that our county is at the table also for these solutions.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we're, we're the lower 10% of the watershed and so they have a lion's share of the area. The other part that I didn't really mention but was build this plan so that the citizens have buy-in to it. That's the point of the citizen group and that's the point of the survey. And so that group, when us as staff or you all as city commissioners or the county staff and commission aren't pulling their weight, that group can come and say, we worked on this, you adopted this plan. We all said this is things that's going to help us, you're not doing it, now go do it.
Tell Winn and me when to come.
So that's part of the other element is, is kind of having that citizen support and really making it their plan. Okay, the last two things, I've talked a lot and I can talk more and you don't want me to do that. Because we've been so successful in getting mitigation grants, it was pretty easy early on of just recognizing these properties have all been impacted by our latest flood. We should go mitigate those. I should point out those mitigation programs are all voluntary so we didn't go and stiff-arm anybody. We said, we have a grant, would you be interested? Here's what the benefits to you and they all said, sure. If they would have said, no, we went, okay, next time we'll get a grant, we'll come back and chat with you. In fact, we had one property that did that. They were impacted in 11. We asked, we got this grant, would you be interested? Said, no, we don't care to be involved. They got flooded again in 18. We asked, you ready to be involved again? They said, yes, please. We're tired of this. So, but because it was pretty easy after the 18th, or the 2011 flood and the 18 floods to just recognize who needs to be mitigated, that's pretty simple. But as we move forward and hopefully we go through a dry spell, we still have those risks. I don't believe in just waiting around and waiting for another flood to recognize that we should have done something with them sooner. So we created this mitigation policy to help better guide us. So we're not, not that we did anything willy-nilly, but to eliminate that perception. And so I gave you a copy of the, the policy. The Wildcat Creek Group reviewed it and recommended that you all consider it as a formal policy. The heart of it is this hierarchy where we would first address properties that have been substantially damaged. Those properties really can't be, per our floodplain regulations, they cannot be reoccupied until they get their stuff in the conformance. We have mitigated all but one property that have been substantially damaged since 2018. So we got one left there. The floodway is the next one. This is where the, you know, the floodwaters are supposed to go. It's the most riskiest flood, flood zone. It's the fastest water, the deepest water, the most destructive. We have a lot of properties in there that we should address. These next two are FEMA standard or FEMA definitions of just that. They are repeatedly flooded. And then the last one is the idea that we addressed one through four really well, but now we have for a variety of reasons, one or two properties just kind of hanging out there that are still at risk and I would argue maybe some are even more at risk than when they had neighbors. I could think of two properties right now that we mitigated all the properties around them. Now they're the last house on the cul-de-sac. It's pretty lonely down there and if a flood happens, you know, they don't have neighbors to say, hey, the water's coming or anything like that or to help them get out or whatever. So that's why I put that on number five. This is a policy kind of in the short term. As I mentioned a couple of times over, we have grander ideas to have a much broader, more comprehensive approach. But this gets us in the short run. In terms of what reality looks like here, as I mentioned, we have one substantially damaged property left that's on Garden Way. It's a commercial property that we haven't been able to get grants for yet, although I've heard rumors that that might change. We have 16 properties in the floodway, two on Wildcat Creek and then the other 14 are in the Blue River, River Valley. Those are truthfully scary to me in terms of what potentially could happen if we had another flood, especially on the Blue River. So that's why those are there. We have no more repetitive, severe repetitive losses with our efforts on those 10 properties. We've eliminated those so far. We have three repetitive loss properties that are really kind of honestly weird and unique. They're in areas I wouldn't have guessed and it's just mostly localized flooding from neighborhood, downspouts and those kind of things. But we still have those three and they could, there's a variety of things we can do there. And then three contiguous properties. So about $5 million, give or take, depending on if we want to acquire them. Some of them I would only consider to be acquired professionally. Raising a house in the floodway is just dangerous, not only for those residents, but our first responders, you're asking a fireman or a police officer to wade through raging floodwaters to get to that house to save them. So, but others can be mitigated in other ways. So that's that policy that we would like you to consider at some point. And this segues into the, the final slide I have here is considering a dedicated funding source. You've seen $5 million, give or take, which is those 20 or so properties and then that action item of a number of other projects that, that are worthy. Right now, we're using stormwater funds and Rob and Brian and his staff and Public Works have a whole long laundry list of projects that that fund is intended for. So the idea, I don't have a dollar amount in mind. Really just want to propose, should we do more research on this? And then we can, and bring you back a, a suggestion or a proposal for a dedicated funding source. The idea, at least initially, would be we would create a surcharge or another fee as part of the residential equivalent unit. So it would be a part of the stormwater fee program, but it would be dedicated to flood mitigation. And not only just those initial properties we looked at, but you could project out to a number of other things. The mitigation planning, you know, storm sirens, the remote sensors, stream gauges, you know, any of those projects in those 30 lists at some point are going to need a dollar or two to fund and make, to implement. So that's the idea is we could have a funding source that, that we can rely upon to make those things happen.
I want to make one comment on that because the stormwater fee is already a dedicated funding source and, and the problem is that it's not truly dedicated because what we do is we keep pirating the money and moving it someplace else. So maybe the proposal should be to fence that money and say it can't be used for anything with stormwater and then we might just have enough.
Where is Deer Run?
Deer Run would be south of Anderson, kind of halfway between Village Plaza and Annenberg Park. So it's a small residential neighborhood. Yeah.
Okay, back to where Russ Weisbender's house was.
It's, that's his subdivision. Yep. So that would be a question. And then from there, it's, if you're in favor of something like this, then we would just have to go back and analyze how aggressive, if you will, if that's the right word, to be, to how large that, that surcharge, that fee would be. You know, is it nickels or is it dollars and just how active we want to be?
Just to be clear, I'm not in favor of that because the stormwater fee is a dedicated fund.
Understood.
That's the point and we need to be sure we use it for stormwater and not paying for other things. And I've gone over that a number of times, so I won't cover those again.
I'd like to see some examples of what other communities are doing. See a bigger picture is what I mean. I, you know, I had some of those same concerns when, as we, as I was thinking about it. Well, we've already got a stormwater fund. And so, but if we did this, I would fence it off too and say, you know, I mean, but on the other hand, we already have a fund that isn't fenced.
Right.
And so I'm torn about what's the right way to go. But I, I would like to see what are, how are some other communities doing flood hazard mitigation and, or funding it or do they, how have they done it?
Most are using their stormwater fund.
Are they?
Lenexa and Johnson, some communities in Johnson County dedicated a sales tax. They're, they had a catchy name for it and I'd be darned if I can remember. Rain the Trails or Rain the Rec, Rain the Recreation. And they dedicated a, a sales tax to stormwater infrastructure mitigation and then converted it all into trails and parks. So there's a variety of ways. Could I ask maybe a follow-up question, both of yours? Is it a preference that we would use stormwater fees? And, because, I mean, to be truthful and, and where's Rob? Rob's right there. He would probably jump up here as well that you all know that the stormwater fee, stormwater fund, because it's been used for some things, historically hasn't had enough money to get projects done to begin with. And, and that's why I've been hesitant and felt a little bad about taking bits and pieces out for mitigation stuff. Is it your preference to find a whole nother funding source? Or add to that stormwater fee and, and kind of budget for mitigation? Just need some clarification or is this not a good idea and we should forget about it?
We can work on some scenarios for them to react to. I think Linda's direction to look to other communities and Wynn's is adequate for us to put some, to get together some scenarios so they can give us better direction.
But I was also wondering, Chad, in this proposal, the plan, I guess, the action plan, the policy, you had, you referenced, or it was referenced, all of these other funding sources and I don't know what that was for. Typical things such as the economic development, the TIF and the Community Improvement District. What or why is all of that in there? Is that something we can look at for something like this? Is that why all of those, the typical ones that we usually do are in there?
Yeah, your, your commercial districts are going to give you an opportunity. Flooding is something that's, that is identified in tax increment financing as a reason to put a TIF district in place. TIF is all about taking properties that are declining in value and reinvesting in them. I mean, that is the purpose of TIF, to look at areas that need the insertion of cash and investment from a development standpoint, creating the environment to do so, generating more revenue from property taxes to help you do so. It fits the definition just spot on in some of our flood-prone commercial areas.
So I would like to look at all of those options.
Yep.
Instead of just one option or one source because we're talking millions of dollars here. And if, the one that comes to mind, and it's a small thing, but when I first came on the city commission, I think it was Petco that wanted it right, right by Home Depot. And we had this extensive conversation about infill and flooding. And that was a lengthy discussion for, for Petco that we had. Looking back now, I wonder if this is something, you know, we should have looked at as far as when businesses want to put somewhere where there's flooding area or drainage issues or something that's comparable to a flood zone space, that they are aware of it and there might be some extra, not only just infill burden, but as far as a funding source for that piece.
I'm thinking about the Village Plaza area. At some point, someone's going to want to redevelop that and we need to be ready and not give away the farm because we aren't ready.
Right.
So, and that's the one that comes to mind immediately.
And Ward Morgan was wanting to do that.
But, but clearly, and I've always advocated, you know, what I, what I call draconian flood regulations. We shouldn't allow people to develop in there. That's why we're in the situation we're in. You've got 300 buildings that probably if somebody 30 years ago had taken a harder stand, they should never have been built there. It's just that simple. I mean, I mean, all these flooding models are just showing you not to build there. So the, you know, the one thing that we passed where you, or if you're going to, you know, add dirt, you got to remove the same amount, that's probably a good plan. We should have done that with Petco. I remember voting against that project because that was not done. And that was the last one and I thought that was strange. You know, we've been arguing about flooding all this time, but when it comes time to build Petco, no, that's fine. Go, go ahead and put some more dirt in Wildcat Creek. And so I, I think, you know, just, we just got to draw the line and say, no, you can't do that. And, and you can't redevelop those buildings we just paid for to tear down, down there in Village Plaza because it floods. Unless you raise that Rock Island roadbed, maybe that would stop it and then you got another problem with the flooding model.
And I think in that area specifically, and to the point of why we had such a laundry list of funding sources, is to give a broad idea of what the potential is. So for that instance, building back the L-shaped building close to the creek can't be done. And they need to put eight feet of fill at least in that spot just to get it above the floodplain or floodproof that way. Can't be done. But I think there's some definite opportunity to bench that area. So you lower some areas, you put that dirt up higher, you make the areas closest to Anderson Avenue that hasn't flooded at a higher elevation and you depress and where you can get that redevelopment. You can use TIF to recapture that loss in property tax that we've, and sales tax and, and improve our floodplain in multitudes of ways. So there's opportunities there and that's the idea behind that policy that I didn't get into and I apologize, is it is a broad spectrum of what the mitigation efforts are. So not just buyout, not just elevate, but there's a multitude of other things. And then there's a whole host of funding sources that can help with those mitigation things. Most of those, unless we're using the TIF or the Commercial Improvement District kind of things, have a cash share element to it of some level, be it 9, 10%, 25%, 50%. And so that was the idea of the policy was here is a broad spectrum of solutions and here's a broad spectrum of funding sources. And most of those have a, a local match of some sort that has to be provided, whatever that percentage is. And to then carry it into this, this policy, or this proposed funding source is just, how do we match that? So that's the, where the policy goes in hand in hand with the idea of, could we get some sort of fund, dedicated fund to it?
I think this is extremely important. I think everybody would agree in our community, even when we talk about the levy or any type of infrastructure, buyouts and all of that. A few things that I've noticed is everything that's going to be done with owners, property owners is on a voluntary basis. Eminent domain will not be used in these instances. And, and that needs to be clear that we're just not going to come in and take over.
Right.
But at the end of the day, it's about flooding because if it's a reoccurring area, we're doing more damage and we don't want people to be displaced. We know renters were displaced and families were displaced and some of them could never go back into their apartments.
Right.
I don't even know if all of them are back in their apartments to this day. So there's, there was a lot of issues, so this is definitely a priority. And looking at a variety of ways to look at funding, even the economic development and infrastructure funds that we have might be an option. In the long run, we want to look at not only mitigating, but in some areas even preventing. And I would like to see an investment in some of those areas where we can look at some preventive measures. And I remember. And I remember sitting in on one of your meetings, and they were talking about other types of infrastructure that we can do, or not do, I guess, to look at preventive measures. But I think, looking at all, all areas, I think this is a good policy that you, that the group has developed, the flood hazard mitigation policy. And also, the few things that we could do probably right away are the public warning signs and the tenant hazard, some of those things that are low-hanging fruit, as they say.
Yep, definitely.
I'd like to see a category called preventive still on your to-do list, or some of those put into a preventive kind of a category. Rather than so much of it hinging on after the flood, which is, you know, the barn doors open and the...
I'm going to look for a different term than event, but yeah, I understand what you're saying.
You should, you mentioned something too. I wanted to ask about better mitigation planning for other flood-prone areas. Tell me what you mean, are you talking about Northview and out on Wildcat Creek? What do you mean by better mitigation planning?
You know, we're, we've done a lot. A lot of it has been reactionary, in terms of what has flooded. We had one that, that was, was in the floodplain, and then substantially burned on the Fourth of July. And we were able to get, we paid nickels to, to, with, to augment their insurance and FEMA dollars. So the city paid nickels compared to getting them out of the floodplain and into a house they would never have been able to rebuild. But we've always been reactionary. With that mitigation benefit estimator that StanTech did for us, we have the opportunity to whole list, or comprehensively, look at all areas of the city and figure out what is the best strategies for that one property, or that one block, or that one neighborhood. And not just buy the house and tear it down, or elevate it. That's what this study was done, with just those two options. But I think there's also options on floodproofing, regrading, maybe it's simple as sirens, and those sort of things, that, you know, there's parts of the Dix edition that, the model at least, I won't say that they'll never get more water, but the model just shows that the street is flooded, and their house is dry in the model. Maybe all we need there is some good sirens to say, hey, the floodwater's coming. Get out sooner rather than later when you're trapped. There's a whole host of mitigation options we can do. And so this is the building block to, to really paint out that better picture of how we should mitigate all areas of Manhattan, better flood.
I really think we've tried to do a good job. I really am proud of our community for the buyouts that we have done over the last, is it four years?
Four years.
Four years. We've made a difference. It's slow, it's three or four a year. But those are properties that have flooded. And I, that to me is so meaningful. So when we talk about areas that haven't flooded, but the model, or somebody says they will someday.
Right.
I'd like to have the priority be those that have flooded. And when we get to the point that, and we're so good, we can move on to the ones that haven't. And I also, as long as we don't have a funding source specifically, I'm not interested in commercial property. The commercial developers have the opportunity, they have to hire engineers for traffic, and geography, and all kinds of things, dirt work. And so they have a different approach to things. And are, they, if they build in a flood-prone area, they're doing it on purpose. And I don't feel like homeowners are doing that. So I want our effort to focus on residential.
Sure.
I don't mean necessarily apartment buildings either. Because those are businesses, for all practical purposes. So I just wanted to say, to me, that's the important part, are these residential. Although, look at the people on Garden Way. They were apartment dwellers, who were certainly put at harm, harms way by... And the other thing is, people have to understand that when Garden Way was built, it was not, there was no such thing as a floodplain.
There are floodplains, but no flood maps, right?
Yeah, I mean, those are old enough properties that they were not in, in harms way at the time. At least there wasn't any flooding that we're, we know of. So we have to consider that the standards, FEMA's standards are changing, our community's standards are changing. And we're trying to be better stewards, public officials, you know, to look after people, and make sure that we aren't endangering people. That, those, that's an, anyway, I just wondered, I'd like for you to add those, take a look at the mobile home courts.
Definitely.
And I don't, and Redbuds very much, you know? It, it didn't, it, the whole thing flooded on Redbud last time around. And so those mobile home courts belong on this better mitigation planning list also. So, that's enough, thank you.
Hi. I, when I, I'm just kind of reflecting back to, and if, you'll go back to that slide you had, the MBE run. Yep. The, this is the first opportunity, I think, I've had to talk about flooding, or learn about flooding, since I've been on the commission. And I was really looking forward to the flood conference. So I held all of my questions in January and February, and, and then that got put off. So we had, it's easy to forget how important, this was the top priority amongst people going into this year. This was, as during the election, it was brought up at every forum, it was brought up at the doorways, and it was a lot at the doorstep. It was, it was focused on the dam, but it was also very fresh in people's minds, the Labor Day flood. And when I, a year, I lived on Wildcat Creek on, at Wood Duck Way, and had the water up to my back door there. It's, and I had my storage unit flooded down by Redbud. The, all those storage units were flooded up, so lost there. It's just something that we, it's amazing how quickly we kind of forget how, how much of a crisis that is when it's happening. And we move on to other things. My, my question, since I haven't had an opportunity to kind of get my bearings here, and everyone else has been through thousands of hours of flood, it seems like, is, is during the wood plan, or part of the wood plan references the 5.1 million in estimated damage, if it's a hundred-year flood? So that, what I'm, what I'm asking here on this slide, this, this references the 86 million in a hundred-year damages. But is that, that's including as if it were blue and cau, and the whole region was a hundred-year flood? So what I'm trying to make sure I understand is, the wood plan picks out the Wildcat Creek portion of that, and they reference that 2017 number of 5.1 million. And what I am just, you know, doing some math here, the 18 million, or the 18 dams, with Fort Riley having two, is 27 million. So it's, those 27, that 27 million is preventing 5.1 million in damages potentially, unless those 18 dams help with that mitigation, which I guess that could be a bigger number, I'm assuming, before it gets into cau. But I don't know how much that would help. I guess it helps with the backup of the blue too.
Right.
But that, that just is a, was a striking number I hadn't seen before. The 5 million in damages is what the Wildcat Creek watershed is really talking about. So it's a big price tag for that, and that would get it down to a 25-year flood damage range. The, the, you know, kind of, kind of realizing that makes it me... The basic premise of your resiliency plan is that, you know, there isn't a possibility to stop the flooding, but if we really wanted to stop that flooding, that prevention, it would require that, those, those up creek detention ponds, which makes it fiscally almost three times the cost of what you would be saving. I just had never seen it laid out like that, quite that way. So it's, I wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding. And I hope that, it's, it feels, it feels really defeated. I feel defeated in that we can't, that we have to operate around the, the plan of mitigation, and the plan that we can't stop the flooding. And I think that goes back to the county, goes back to Fort Riley, is finding those partners and ways to help. But it's, it's a, it's a tall order to try to do any mitigation efforts on the Wildcat Creek side, at least, when all of that's coming.
It is tough and defeating. And I think what puts it right in my brain, and I know I've talked way long, and so I apologize, I could talk forever on this, is we have Tuttle Creek Reservoir. And that doesn't prevent flooding for us, it only protects us a lot. It does a great job of protecting us from flooding, but it doesn't prevent flooding. The same with those 18 ponds, or whatever we built. It'll protect us a lot, but there's always a chance for rain where those ponds are all full, or something happens, and all those homes below downstream will flood. And so that's why I say we'll never prevent flooding. We have one of the greatest flood protection devices too, the Levy and Tuttle Creek Reservoir. But we got real scared last year, in 93, we saw what would happen when the perfect situation happens. So we can never prevent flooding. Anybody that, that knows what they're talking about, and says, oh, this will prevent it, is a fool. And so all we can do is lessen our risk and better protect ourselves from it. And a lot of that is a high price tag, and even then, we're not completely protected from it, so.
Thanks, Chad. I did, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say one thing. Yeah, we, we somehow have got to get the Riley County Commission on board to some degree, simply because Manhattan's in the middle of Riley County, and so it's their concern too. They get 90% of their, their money from the taxpayers of Manhattan, in Manhattan. And we vote for them, and so they, they need to have some concern about flooding in Manhattan also. It's just not our problem, it's their problem, because we're their constituents also. And so I don't, it's, yeah, so we, we'll, we'll need to kind of keep working that, that a little bit, and keep impressing on them the importance of them taking this as a serious problem, and them helping us come up with some solutions. And then it'll be, it can be a mutual help society of sorts here. But, you know, just, if we're at the bottom 10% of the watershed, 90% of it's up there, it's, and we're, we're their concern also. And that's the thing that we need to keep impressing on them.
Yep.
All right, and I was going to say, we definitely need to bring it up at the City-County-County meeting, after elections are over, maybe even early part of next year.
Yeah.
Because they were, after the last flooding situation, there were, they didn't have sirens that were working, or something of that sort, there was a whole lot of issues that were going on. So definitely, that's going to be back on the table. But I did want to give some time for public comment on this. I'm assuming they're, because they're here on this issue. Do you have any public comment? Maybe not on this issue? Oh, somehow I just assumed it was about flooding, maybe it's not. So I think, I don't know, we all said it's a priority, need to find a funding source. Some of those immediate steps you can take, please do, as far as tenants and such, signage. We'd rather see that sooner than later. And I think the policy you proposed with the group is, is very good. And let's get to work on some of those things. It is going to be an expensive price tag, but it's something that we knew all the time. It's not a shocker. And we just have to find some sources to fund some of the things we could do, and maybe have a five or 10-year plan, because I didn't see a timeline anywhere for...
Haven't developed that yet, but that's part of the, the final to-dos.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be helpful too, to see a timeline of some sort. And bring it back to the City-County-County. I remember Fort Riley several times saying, this is not on one of their top five priorities. Their funds are being used for other things, and they're already low on funding sources. But they need to be part of the discussion, even if they cannot put funds into it. My last question to you is, we received a letter about the detention ponds might cause property valuations to decrease for some of those farmers and ranchers. I want to know if you can add any more comments to that?
I really can't. I don't know enough about ag land, property tax. I will say, the, the vision of that study that did the, the private farmland was either to use existing ponds, or build new ponds that would be mutually beneficial to those farmers and ranchers, either for irrigation, or watering stock, or whatnot. It wasn't so much that there would be four acres of water all the time. But I can't really comment on if, you know, what, what that, you know, most of them would be in easements that the county or us, or jointly would own, and to maintain those ponds in theory. And so I don't know what that would do to property tax, I can't speak to that. But the idea was, it would be a mutually beneficial program. And the reality is, it came from Riley County's commissioners, was the idea. So it wasn't a city staff thing, it was a county commissioner idea. So maybe they know more about it, and they are more supportive of it, I don't know.
Just so that we have a response to the letter.
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
I have a weird question. There are times that the city does not annex a road, for example. Are there times that a city, do we, in that area where Wildcat Creek is in the city, it is not annexed, right?
There are some areas that are, that the, the channel is not in the city, so...
Yeah, uh-huh, that's what I was thinking.
The stuff north of Stone Point residential area, that is mostly out of the city, I believe. Then it goes in the city of, part of it is Annaberg Creek, and then it goes back out where the Wildcat Golf Course is.
That's what I wondered.
And so it kind of swaps back and forth.
So we have no real ability to do anything on the stream banks unless, well, even if it's annexed, we might not, we wouldn't own it.
A large part of it is, is private property too, so there's that also.
Thanks.
All right.
All right.
We'll keep working, thank you for the guidance, thank you for letting me take a whole lot of your time. This is a topic I can go on for hours on, so thank you for listening to me, thank you very much.
Lot of, lot of good, good stuff. Thank you, Chad. Our final agenda item is the 2020 financial update, and I'm not sure who's doing the update on this. Oh, Rena.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Rena is our Assistant Finance Director, is that right?
Yes.
Did I get the time right? Thank you.
Maybe good time for recess, I guess.
I do, yeah.
And I have a copy of the presentation, too, so, okay. Good evening Commissioners, tonight I will be providing a financial update as of the third quarter of 2020. This update is a snapshot of our actual expenses and revenues in four funds. We are comparing the year-to-date actuals to 75% of the budget and to the total budget for 2020. Slide two. 2020 update. Back in May, it was mentioned that the stay-at-home order and the close of campus due to COVID-19 would have an impact on our tax revenues as well as our operations. The impact has been primarily on sales tax and transient guest tax collections. With the reopening of businesses this summer and the limited service capacity, sales tax and transient guest tax collections continue to be monitored. To date, we are down 3% in sales tax revenue compared to the third quarter of 2018 and 2019. I will provide an update on transient guest tax collections later in the presentation. We collect property taxes in eight funds. And as of September, we are at 99% collections with 1% delinquency. We anticipate another distribution at the end of October, which will be primarily composed of motor vehicle taxes. This slide represents our major revenue sources in a few funds. Our sales taxes are reflected of three funds, the general fund, our sales tax fund, and our tip fund, and it's just the 1% city sales tax that is reflected for that budgeted amount as well as those actuals for 2015 to 19, and then the year-to-date for 2020. The franchise fees of 3.1 million is reflective in the general fund. And then we have the general fund property taxes listed, as well as the bond and interest fund property taxes. I wanted to highlight two revenue sources, the sales taxes and franchise fees. To date, we have collected about 70% of the total budget amount for both. However, if we look at our collections compared to 75% of the budget for the past three quarters, we have collected 95% of the sales taxes and 93% of the franchise fees. So that's just taking that budgeted amount, dividing it by 12, and multiplying it by nine to get, or three-quarters, to get that 95% for sales taxes and 93% for franchise fees. Tonight, we're going to talk about four funds. We always look at all of our funds, at least on a monthly basis, but tonight we wanted to talk about these four in particular because of their impact, not only to our operations citywide, but also to the community, our debt payments and some project improvements that we have going on. The first fund is the general fund. And this is as of September 30 of 2020. So we have our actuals, we have 75% of the budget here, and then we have our 2020 total budget. And I wanted to highlight that for our revenues, the target is to be as close to 100% for year-to-date, which we are at 99.2%, and at 75% or above in comparison to the total budgeted revenues. And we are just 0.6% shy of that target. We do anticipate receiving some Spark funds to reimburse for some of our expenditures related to COVID-19 and for, to improve our revenue shortfalls. Back in May, this slide was presented. And the first column, the May projection column, these categories were presented to provide information about potential budget cuts and revenue offsets. To date, we have actually received $103,000 in CARES funds for the airport. And then the other five categories are savings to our general fund budget. And so the total savings and revenue offsets are about $3.5 million, which is about 90% of what was proposed in May. So from May, when this was first presented until now, we have saved about $3.5 million. This slide is similar to the revenue slide, but it's broken out by the general fund functions. And the goal for this slide is to have 75% of our actuals compared to year-to-date, as well as the budget at 75%. So right now, we're trending at about 9% above the 75% rate for this time of the year. But overall, we're at 61.5% of the budget in terms of our total spend. This is just a graphical representation of what has been going on in the general fund for the last 10 years. And so beginning in 2017, I just wanted to highlight something in the general government category. Our general government category is comprised of the city manager's office, finance, airport, human resources, community development, legal, general services, outside services, and municipal parking. And in 2017, we had a health insurance, our health insurance premiums were moved out of the general fund to our employee benefit fund, which is one of those property tax benefit funds that I had mentioned earlier. And then in 2018, we had a hiring freeze. So that dip from 2016 to 2018 is because of those two reasons. And then also want to just highlight, if we compare our third quarter of 2015 to our third quarter of 2020, just for the general government area, which is the blue line, we have 7.2 million in expenditures for 2020 and 7.4 million for 2015. The drop in expenses from 2019 to 2020 for parks and recreation and public works is due to the operational savings mentioned earlier. Here is one of the funds that we are going to discuss this evening. Special Alcohol Fund is a liquor tax generated on the sale of drinks in a restaurant or bar. It is not generated from the sale of liquor in stores. And these funds are distributed quarterly and divided into thirds and credited to the Special Alcohol Fund, Special Parks and Recreation Fund, and the General Fund. And so on our budget amount, our Special Alcohol Fund receives $485,800. To date, we have collected $286,234 in revenue, which is about 59% of the total budget. In December, we should receive our fourth quarter payment, which is for sales from July through September. Based on the revenue collections for the third quarter, which was a total of $100,000, split between the three funds, so $33,000 apiece, the limited capacity in establishments and some establishments not reopening, we are anticipating a shortfall of $121,000, which is 21, 25% of the budget. With this information, we anticipate that the first quarter special alcohol taxes will not come in on target for 2021. This slide is just the representation of how the budget is allocated. There are 15 agencies that receive special alcohol money to provide alcohol and drug services programs within the community. To date, we have allocated $288,900 of this $364,350 targeted budget for three-quarters of the year. And so we're down 21% of the target allocation. So these entities have not received their full targeted allocation as of the end of September. All agencies were informed of the shortfall for the third quarter. We also let them know that we are anticipating a shortfall for the fourth quarter as well. If funds are received in December, they will be distributed to the agencies based on their current percent allocation of the budget, which is reflected in that first column. Tourism convention, and I know the chamber was here and explaining things about what was going on. And I just wanted to just to highlight our budget amounts. We have $2,106,82 that was budgeted for tourism convention for the year. To date, we have only collected $1,093,286, which is 52% of the budget. In December, we should receive our fourth quarter payment, which is for sales from July through September. And then based on the revenue collections for the third quarter, similar to what is going on with special alcohol, the decline in travel gatherings, events, and conferences, we are anticipating a shortfall of $831,000, which is 40% of the budget. With this information, we anticipate that the first quarter transient guest taxes will not come in on target for 2021 as well. Here's another slide that breaks out the budget and how those funds are allocated. So at this time, we've only paid out about 50% of the budget allocation. So these agencies have not received their full allocations for the year. All agencies were made aware of the potential shortfall back in the second quarter. Whatever funds are received in December, we have anticipated to use them as our transfer to debt service for Annaberg Park improvements, as well as for the conference center. If there is excess, those funds will be used to distribute to the agencies based on their percent of budget allocation, which is reflected on the PowerPoint. Wanted to highlight City University, because they also receive sales tax money as well as electric and gas franchise fees that are generated on campus. The franchise fee for electric and gas is 4% of gross revenues, and we receive those funds on a monthly basis. These funds are used to pay for public improvements that benefit the city and K-State mutually. And right now, the main project that has been discussed is the North Campus Corridor. The budget for the City University Fund is at $826,000. And we've collected to date $548,000, of which about $404,000 is related to franchise fees. And then we've already transferred the money from the general fund related to the sales taxes to the City University Fund. And then we've also received some miscellaneous revenue, about $5,100. So we are anticipating a $250,000 shortfall, which is 30% of the budget for 2020. My final slide, I just want to highlight some key points. And as we close out this year and move into 2021, as part of the OEI initiative, the organization emphasized the need to have a strategic plan and a PACE study. And we're moving in the direction of a strategic plan, based on your approval at the October 6th meeting. Then, as we look at our sales tax information, this information provides that it has remained flat for the past five years. And just due to the unpredictable nature of the spending habits of others, it is not a reliable revenue source. This has been a topic of discussion with our bond rating agencies for a number of years. And they recommend that we explore more reliable revenue streams, such as property taxes, to support critical operations and debt obligations. Other things to consider include investing in operation services and equipment, facilities, and infrastructure. And then finally, we will continue to explore and recommend best practices to improve our financial stability and bond ratings. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Rena. I have a couple of questions, and I'm, then I'll pass it on to the Commissioners. So in all of the savings from Sparks Funds, we're generally doing okay, it seems like. The ones I am concerned about, I, I understand about the transient guest tax and some of the obligations that we were not able to meet with social services or the special alcohol fund. So in reference to that, did we, I hope somebody has contacted them about the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation CARES funds that they might be eligible for, as well as the funds from the chamber that they might be eligible for? Because those might make up some of those gaps if they're related to COVID. At the City University Fund, you said we, we have a shortfall of $250,000. And then you talked something about transfers. I didn't quite understand all of that.
So the City University Fund, the primary source of revenue is our electric and gas franchise fees. However, we do receive a sales tax transfer from the general fund for the portion of sales tax that's collected on campus. So all of the sales tax, the 1% sales tax goes into the general fund. And then we have an analysis that we use to compute how much of the campus sales tax should go into the City University Fund.
Because we dedicated, like you mentioned, about $500,000 to the North Campus Corridor. And I wanted to see if we were going to have a shortfall on that or if we're able to move that. Otherwise, it's going to come from somewhere, so.
We'll likely have a shortfall. So I think they anticipate just over $650,000 coming in, instead of the traditional million dollars from, for the City University Fund. We take about a couple hundred thousand of that and fund the fire department. And then we look for other projects and programs to invest in. We had anticipated a half million for North Campus Corridor. When we looked at that fund and what we've committed, $250,000 was part of our equation that we factored in for college and Kimball. And that's really all we've dedicated so far in terms of buying down future debt. So we can get by with a quarter of a million dollars this year and still look to the fund to see what other programs and projects they can accomplish. But it will be short, it will not be the full amount as we anticipated.
Okay, yeah, that was my major concern. I think the other ones, we will find a way for most of the other resources, the other agencies that I see, as well as even our own budget, with the Spark money and the CARES funds for the airport and for Adibus and such. So all the rest of the Commissioner comments.
Mayor, I failed to mention, but back to City University and the franchise fees, the reason why they're down is because of the gas franchise fees. Those are the ones that are coming in lower, and that's attributable to the installation of efficiency units in the dwellings. So that is the reason that our franchise fees for the gas portion is down.
The gas portion, you said?
Yes, the electric portion is about $50,000 a month, and the gas is about $18,000 a month.
And typically, what is that? Is it much higher?
Yes, it's been in the 30s and 40 thousands in the past.
You, you said that's because of efficiencies, which means that money's never coming back? Probably.
Probably.
Yeah, we would have to increase the...
It's not a one-time drop this year because of COVID? It's, it's permanently more efficient? We're never going to see that difference in money, probably?
We've seen that decline over the last several years. Even with increases in building permits and residential units, commercial buildings, those efficiencies are being gained across the board by every homeowner and every business as they replace their HVAC units and any type of electrical appliance or gas appliance. They're becoming more efficient.
Good, good in that sense. So, my, the mayor said something, which I want to have you clarify. We were talking about the Special University, I mean, not, not, the Special Alcohol Fund. Those agencies are getting less, you had thrown out there social service. Did you mean Social Service Advisory Board agencies or just some of the social service agencies? We haven't cut social service agency board funding.
Correct.
It's only the social service agencies that get money from the alcohol fund that will not get their full complement of, of money.
Yeah.
Right, because that's what I meant to say.
Okay, I thought, I thought that, but I, because I didn't see Social Service Advisory Board,
Just from the alcohol.
Just the agencies that get money from both. They're, they're not getting to get as much alcohol money just because it's not available.
Correct.
Very good, okay, thank you.
And I also just wanted to say that from the other agencies that get it, I think from the transient guest tax or from economic development, the Chamber Downtown, DMI, Manhattan Art Center and such, Aggieville Business Association and Downtown Manhattan will probably get their 100% because of economic development funds that we allotted them.
That's accurate. The commission took that action and they've been receipted those dollars. If we do have an uptick for the last quarter of transient guest tax, we will not submit those payments to DMI or ABA.
And we did encourage them to go for the CARES funds.
We did, and they've explored that with the foundation. Unfortunately, they're both in a, a tax category of a 501, whatever they are, C5 or whatever. It, it just, it doesn't work well with the, the federal process.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, thank you. Other questions for Rena or comments?
Yeah, the only comment I have, you know, looking at that line chart you had there, with the, you know, four lines, you got to get them. And it shows, you know, substantial reductions from Public Works and Parks and Rec. And I can understand public safety staying pretty much flat, because we sort of made that, you know, the guidance for the fire department, the police and those things. But the blue line for general government, that's not going in the right direction. It, it looks like all the cuts are being taken out of two places, and I don't understand why general government is going up. There, there needs to be a harder look at that.
One more question. If you could go back a few slides to the property tax update.
If you could go back a few slides to the property tax update. There you go, that one. I was curious as to why everything isn't 1. something percent less. Because I, I don't know how, how you can have the police-fire pension thing having a higher delinquency level than anything else. Because I, unless I don't understand how, you, when you pay your property taxes, you don't say, okay, I want to pay for this, and I don't want to pay for that, and I don't want my tax money divvied up this way. How is any of those different than any of the other ones? Just, I'm just curious, why is it, and it's not, if, if a certain amount of property tax is collected and it's divvied up according to a mill levy amount, how can some things be more delinquent than others? Or a higher percentage of delinquency, especially the police-fire pension?
It's based on the budget, but also the mill levy as well. The mill levies are different across the eight funds.
But if it's.
So the library mill levy is one rate. And.
RCPD.
RCPD might be another, I'm.
I'm, I'm just curious, the percentage of delinquency, how, how can there be a difference in, if you pay your property tax, you pay your property tax. If you don't pay it, you don't pay it. And it should be, I, I don't understand why there's a difference in the delinquency percentage.
So this amount also includes the motor vehicle.
The what?
The motor vehicle payments as well. So it's just not the average.
Okay, so there's other.
Yes, it also includes the motor vehicle, so that, that.
There you go. That explains it. Thank you for, Mayor.
Well, you must have done an excellent job Rena. There was not too many questions for you like we had for Chad. If there aren't anymore.
The, the only comment I wanted to make, and, and this, I told Rena at the end of the presentation, the two things I really wanted you to walk away with this presentation. Our revenues are about where we need them to be. We're 75% through the year, and we're just under 75% in revenue. The expenditures are where we are in really better shape. We've only expended about 63% of our budget, 75% through the year. So the savings that we identified that Rena went through back in May and that we've actually realized are putting us in a better financial position as we undertake the next three months. Those next three months are, are our highest sales tax months of all 12. When you look at our receipts, those next three months will be vital. I don't anticipate they'll be at the levels they have been in the past. So our savings for the first nine months of the year are more than likely going to be drawn down. And you'll see those revenue streams likely not consistently stay and get 100% of our anticipated revenues. Now, I know Dennis is working really hard on the Spark. That could be a difference maker and more than likely will be. But the money we've received so far from CARES is really the 400,000, or I'm sorry, 800,000 for the airport. And that's made a $400,000 difference in the other revenue category. And that's why we're really at about 75%. So I just wanted you all to be very well aware. We've done our due diligence. We have saved, we have held back on travel, hiring, and a lot of programs. And we, we've saved that money. We're going to be cautious going into the next three months. And that first quarter '21 will be the same caution. Those are really the, the main points I just wanted you to walk out of here with tonight.
I think you make some good points. One of the things I did want to say is you've mentioned travel, and that I couldn't understand. The May projection was 220,000 and then actual was 140.
It's three.
Who spent 140?
No, no, we've saved, we have, we haven't spent 140, is essentially. And we've still got another quarter, which we won't spend that roughly $50,000. We'll get real close to $200,000 in savings. You bet.
Yeah.
And so to follow up your, so the sales tax we will get here in October, November, and December, is it 60 days or 90 days behind?
Sixty.
So it'll be.
Two months.
So it'll be the, the money from August, September, and October that we'll get yet this year. So if it's, if it's, so if, even if you have a good November and December, we won't know until January and February.
Correct.
So we're just going to live off of the last couple of months.
Yep.
And so however good the economy's been, that's what we'll see.
Yep.
Okay.
I do want to say, I think it was a very prudent, responsible, and bold step that, that the administration took as far as our Parks and Recreation. We didn't know where we were going to end up. And we were thrilled to have Vivian work for RCHD as well as the city. And I'm glad they're looking at getting their own PIO, and that's going to help us a lot. And, yeah, the county is what I meant. And then the Spark Funds is, I wouldn't say a bonus, but that was something unanticipated. And it'll just cover some of the costs that we already have. So it's not to say we're going to go above and beyond, but it's going to kind of meet us at expectations. And, and we still have to be very cautious as we move forward. So, thank you once again. I appreciate the update. Okay, with that, is there anything else? Okay. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.